Five hundred bucks, right? All right, I'm ready.
Okay, you're recording.
All right, we'd like to welcome everyone out tonight. We'll call them if you need to order at seven thirty-four. Since somebody was a few minutes late, it took the table, let him slide this thing. Uh, we appreciate everyone coming and welcome them. Uh, at this time, I would ask if, uh, the chief would lead us in the pledge and...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Part of your kindness and thought that we could come together this evening as city council citizens of Shelley and our, our police. And we're so thankful for the opportunity we have to serve the citizens of Shelley. And yes, I swear it will be with us this day that we might be able to discuss the matters of the city and make choices that would benefit the citizens. And we have some blessings from our first responders and those that are fighting in wars and for those different countries that they have wars again and that they'll watch over them. Please bless us this night and we citizens of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. Council, if there's no questions on the minutes or changes, I would accept motion to approve consent agenda items. One, A, B, C, and D.
May I make motion to go ahead and approve consent counter items, one, A, B, C, and D?
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second and if we go ahead and approve consent agenda items, one, A, B, C, and D. Jeff?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Have five. Three ayes and one absent, can I need to excuse like these? Uh, next, I'm going to change schedule just a little bit on our agenda. So, we are going to go from two to J. So, and then we'll go back to two. So, uh, at this time, we are going to, uh, turn the table to Adam, um, and Leighton.
Okay, as you all know, Chief Muller is retiring at the end of this month, May thirty-first. It's gonna be a sad day. But, um, we are excited for where he's leaving us and we're working to pick up from there. And so, we have done interviews and we interviewed three great candidates. Um, and, but we have finalized it with, uh, we're going to go ahead and offer it, I guess, to Chad Perser, which he is aware of. It's good to see his family here tonight, that's awesome. So, um, we're gonna go ahead and move to appoint Chad Perser as the new chief of police for the city of Shelley, effective June first.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved in second and that we appoint Chad as of June first for the new police chief. All in favor? Three in favor, I don't get to vote, if that's all right? Uh, anyway.
We need a picture.
As of June first, you're it, man, so we can blame it all on you. So, but we do need to take a picture, so, let's real quick. I don't even know where I put my phone. Adam's got a phone. Anyway, let's, let's have all the police come up. Let's get a picture with all the police.
I don't, I don't think I, I matter in this bit.
Oh, you do.
It's, it's you.
Down on the chair.
Chair. My chair.
Whoa, wide lens here. Just out. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Okay, we got it, girlfriend.
Okay, now we gotta have a picture with your family too. I mean, the police don't have to be with you, 'cause I know you don't want that on your wall, but your family gets to be with you.
I am, I am missing some kids, can we do that in a minute?
Yeah.
Sure.
I got two more kids coming, but...
Sure, we can do it another night even.
They're coming for baseball, so...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank, thank you all the service all for coming.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah, congrats.
Boys, do you know what this means? You should wait for the two older ones to get here. I hope they have some good answers.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're excited to have Chief Muller retiring while he can still do stuff, while he can still do stuff. No, no, not, not that. I, I want people to be able to retire when they can still go do things. So, I, I'm, I'm excited that he has that opportunity. Uh, there's a few people that can't retire till after I retire, but the rest of them, and we're excited for a new chief.
Can I retire before you retire?
No.
I think it's, I think...
Four years after me, buddy.
Yeah.
And one year after me. Okay, now we'll go back to the schedule. Uh, Lori Boy, is she here?
She's not here, should, was she?
I just talked to her.
Okay, what'd you find? I guess you were gonna do some research and brand or something.
Yeah, so much ago you asked us if we'd look, kinda look into this. Um, you guys have a big map, I put in front of you, it's kind of a...
Yeah.
So, um, so the idea, so this re, so you can see the retention pond. That sits on the south west, sorry, the northwest corner of Phase Two on Sunset Vista. The access road for that pond, so the idea is to run a line down the access road and then go to the terminal north approximately three hundred feet. That'll be the edge of the city property right there, then it'd be up to the homeowners to get, uh, one inch water line from there to their houses.
And, and what's it gonna cost?
So, it's, so a couple ideas, we can do, uh, so, we'd have to run a four inch water line down through there. Um, four inch water line's gonna cost between eight and ten thousand dollars. There's approximately five hundred feet of line that's gotta be ran. Uh, that would be sufficient for a tap to sprinkle the retention pond, plus do the three one inch lines for those homes back there. Um, uh, the other thing I would like to think about, um, if we were to put a six inch water line in there, it will up the cost between eight, or sorry, it'll ca, up the cost between thirteen and fifteen thousand dollars, if I didn't have four or five thousand dollars. But with the six, the six inch water line, we can stick a fire hydrant back there for fire. So, right now, there's no hydrant available for those three homes in that area. So, this would also serve as some emergency services, plus it also puts a blowout that will be dead in line. It gives us a blowout right there to flush that line. Most likely with, with three one inch surfaces right there, that line probably isn't gonna really need to be flushed, there'll be enough water running through it, but, like I say, it kinda, it does give us a flushing point, plus it gives us some, some protection back there in that corner.
I know what, there was four homes hooked up at one time, and now it's only three, is that correct? Do you know?
I, I know of the three, so if there was a fourth one...
There's a trailer that no one lives in, but I think at one point they had water?
Okay.
So, is that something that, could there, there could still be possibly four hooked up?
Well, I don't, I don't know, is it in, is it in the county, it's still in the county, right?
Yeah, so, no, those homes aren't in the county, but, I mean, it, with, with a four inch line or a six inch line, we could hook up one more and...
I guess that's a conversation we'd have to have with the owners there, just to see that there's ample. I like the idea of having a fire hydrant there, just for safety.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing even close, the closest hydrant we have would probably be down by Artis Circle, and that's a thousand feet away. This would at least put it within probably three hundred, we'd get a bumper truck there and be able to drill out, so it'd be a lot quicker response then.
Okay, so, question I've got is, can Brent subdivide more of the closer tighter than that?
Um, probably, you know, I honestly don't know. I, I don't know, I did not look at that.
I think it's, yeah, I think they're more closer to that access road, yes.
Is there, I was gonna say, maybe that corner, I don't know if that's showing a hydrant on that corner right there, possibility?
I think there's one, I, I don't know if it was on this, there side or over the other side.
So, so I, if there, if there is one on that corner, that is close, but just keep in mind when you build a home, they're gonna have fences, they're gonna have vegetation, stuff like that, so to try to roll hoses over fences or stuff like that, that's gonna be a, create an issue also.
Well, okay, I, to be honest with you, I, I'm not against it, I just have a hard time spending very much money for, for a count.
But, but aren't we gonna have an annex simplicity?
Well, that's, they don't agree with that yet, but that's what we talked about.
Ju, so also keep in mind, this is gonna benefit the city also, because right now we have a two inch water line running down Highway ninety-one, an old galvanized line. If that line ever starts leaking, and we have to start tearing up the highway to replace that line, thirteen thousand is probably pretty cheap to...
Is it going to the bulk?
It is, that's, that's the only, there are, there are four connections on that and a bulk plant's the other one. Now, I haven't talked to Sean Lekington about it, but where he purchased the, the, uh, landlot on the corner, we could come off a roll bulk with a water line for him. So, we do have that option, but Sean would be the fourth connection on there that we would have to figure out what to do for the bulk plant.
So, it sounds like we have a little bit more discussing, and so how we need to send, talk to the homeowners to...
Why did we reach out to Lori this morning, went and talked to her? Because the other part of this is the homeowners are gonna have probably between two thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars in parks. That doesn't include the trenching, that's just for a meter pit, a meter, some plumbing pit, you know, some one inch quality pipe, stuff like that. So, I did go talk to her this morning and she was fine with that. She's, she says she liked this idea, but I haven't talked to the other two homeowners in there, so she's the only one that I reached out to, so...
And, okay, and she understands that if we do this, then we're annexing them in the city?
Uh, we did not have that discussion though. I, I, I didn't know if we were doing that or not, so this, that's the, that's the other reason I stopped the line where I did, 'cause that's still city property, and then from there it'd be up to them to get a water line to their, to their house.
If they're outside water users, though, our policy's been that they sign an outside water use agreement, which again, give, then gives them consent, and that's not new, that's been around.
And they've been there for a long time, so there probably was never consent there. But they probably signed the agreement when the law was that if you had water, it was implied consent.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, we can look into that, it'd be, it would be worth talking to them.
We told them, since she was here, I made comment, David else, like that.
Yes.
But we also made the comment that just because she signs an agreement, doesn't mean we're gonna annex it.
That is also right, yeah, it's all, it's just a consent to annex.
Right, it's consent to annex.
If the city decides at some point to do that.
And, and that's a struggle, because all of the people that live in the city limits are paying for those.
Yeah, so there is a, well, I said, there's a benefit to the city on this, without having to tear out Highway ninety-one. Um, the other thing I did reach out to Brent, Brent is willing to, Brent is willing to do the install of the five hundred feet at his pri, at his, at his expense, no, no charge to us, no charge to these owners. So, while he's in there doing that corner of Phase Two, he would go ahead and just do the installation of this pipeline. So...
So, they're, about to annex it, is that just because the tax increase?
Usually.
Yeah.
Usually.
Can we kinda get a rough idea what that would look like for them?
Um, depends on the value, I know that the value has gone up a lot in the city. Um, the assessor is gonna be here June fourteenth to talk about that, just kinda explain, most of them have doubled, so I'd have to look up the value to see what they're at, and then, if I can find the value, um, our levy rate is about point zero zero five five, just as an average. So, if it was a hundred thousand dollars after the homeowner's exemption, it'd be about five hundred and fifty dollars.
'Cause I guess that's, that's the other thing we need to address too, so, I mean, I'm not against doing it, I'm just, I wanna make sure that we're not using taxpayer money to take something outside of the seventy-five.
And we've got plenty of time, right? I mean, Brent hasn't started Phase Two yet, this could be later this fall, it might even be next year, who knows? So, we got plenty of time for discussion. So, that's, that's gonna wrap right now, just wanted to give you a, kinda idea of it.
Okay, so from here, what's pipe prices, do they go up every week, or...
Yeah, they are, they'll give you a price for, I think it's either three days or seven days, so it changes weekly.
So, I guess we need to find out if they're willing to be annexed, and if all three of them are willing to do that, and... Because if only one of them wants it, that's not feasible to do. Okay, Kim, you taking care of that?
Yep, I'll take care of it.
All right, good. So, as soon as we find that out, then, then we can commit, if, one way or the other, we can commit.
If it's by all pipe or not, you know, all ain't got you right now, until you gotta do some checking, just let me know what you have to do.
So, you said it would be, if we wanted to put a six inch in with a fire hydrant, it's gonna be sixteen thou...
We're gonna be between thirteen and fifteen. I'm, I'm really hoping more like around twelve to thirteen, but with things going up and stuff, I did throw a little bit in there, so... I'd say thirteen to fifteen for a six inch with a hydrant, and eight to ten, four inch, no hydrant.
So, I'm going sixteen and ten.
Good.
'Cause if we take two weeks, it'll go up that much probably, there may be volatility going on. Good, all right, thank you. All right, so Kim, if you'll check on that, and then, as soon as we know, then we can...
Move forward.
Move forward, even, even just... Okay, uh, next.
Farrell, Farrell, you're here.
Well, hold on, let's, let's have a picture with the family here. Okay, guys with the bats, you gotta leave the bats there.
Boys, do you know what this means, making, having your dad be the chief of police? That means everyone's watching what you're doing, so when you get your driver's cycle, you can't speed, you can't run through a stoplight.
Would you tell my daughter that?
And whatever, don't ever kiss a girl in the school parking lot, 'cause he'll know without.
Before you get home.
Yep. Oh, child. Hey, that's her, I'm not giving you a right home picture.
You didn't have to run that far, so...
Three.
All right. Thanks for coming in, young man. Okay, Earl, you're up.
All right.
And we are getting the Reader's Digest version, right?
Uh-huh, I saw the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, you got a full, full agenda, so...
I think I printed these off, they're on my desk buried somewhere.
So, I will be brief with, um, tonight, as we went through the audit this year, the bottom line is, we didn't have any problem getting the information we needed. When we want to do these audits, it's a number of different things, so we look at the controls, internal controls, the county. We look to see if they're operating effectively, if there were issues of any kind that we felt like were the weakness near controls or the finances, uh, we would make note of that, but we don't have any, um, this year. We test revenues, um, not only from the state revenues into the city and make sure they're posted in the correct accounts, and they tie with the state records. Look at the property tax rolls and the collections and see if you're getting what you were supposed to through the levy. Um, we also look at, um, a sample of the water sewer billings, for example, sanitation. Um, test, make sure from collections, um, through the, the whole system, that everything's being accounted for. Um, expenditures, we look at samples of that, and we trace a series of checks through the year and trace those back into the original invoices, make sure not only the dollar amount that paid each ties and they're approved, um, by the council, and they're posted the right accounts. So, in a summary, that's kind of what we do. I just wanted to point out a couple things, just going through the graphs real quick. Um, I think that's probably the best, but, but then...
I think the, then we're...
We'll start with the total cash.
Okay.
For me, this gives a, a quick idea of the trends, um, for the cities. You can see in, in total cash, if you add all the funds together, um, that that cash balance is gradually going up every year from two thousand seventeen up to two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the biggest increase between twenty and twenty-one, I believe, would be the ARPA money, um, came in that's, that's sitting there. That's why there's that little bigger jump right there, and I'll, I'll show you something with that in just a second. The next two are general information, you know this, um, revenues by type, and the breakout of the total revenues of the city, and, um, intergovernmental revenues, it's listed there. Wait, primarily be the state money, um, you've got federal grants, that would be included if it was counted as revenue for the year. ARPA hasn't been counted as revenue yet, it won't be recognized until you commit to spend it. So, and then the expenditures by function, which is pretty interesting how even that's split out through the whole, the whole city, through the different functions that you have, through utilities and, um, public works, public safety. Capital outlay would be, um, I guess, equipment purchases, improvements to property in the buildings, and things like that. Your general fund, the next graph, you can see where that, um, cash balance has been increasing gradually here, which since that's the biggest, um, part of the government right now, and of course, that jump, then, once again, is that ARPA. Your street fund, pretty consistent, um, of each year, and so I really don't have any questions there. I don't see trends in any of these really that would cause me any concern. Um, street lighting, the, the current, uh, the last three years have been pretty consistent. Usually, like in two thousand eighteen, what happens to, in street fund, when that jumps is a, a project, a beer project or something like that, took place in that fund for that year that was covered. And since the revenues were higher, it tells me it was either a transfer in or a grant or something for that year. Uh, your revenue sharing, um, fairly consistent each year, revenue sharing from state, and I think that's the fund we use pretty much. Um, it's, it's not so much the regular operating activity, but for the, uh, major purposes you have. And then you have your utility funds, so your sanitation, uh, that balance has been climbing gradually each year, uh, from two thousand seventeen up to twenty-one. Your water fund, um, same thing, you had, let's see, you had nineteen twenty-one gradual increase in that, in that fund, and then of course, your sewer funds have been pretty even every year. So, overall, um, the activities of the city are pretty normal from what we would expect, from what we, we see. Um, in your audit report itself, I'll probably point out a couple things in here, um, on page seven and eight, this is your statement of net position, and this would be in the, the one. And I guess just to mention right before that, our opinion letter is a clean opinion, it's not qualified for any reason, and, and we don't have any findings to report, as far as the audit goes. This statement of net position puts all of the activity of the city into one financial statement, like a business enterprise. And so, this is where you would find anything dealing with capital assets who've been appreciated, and also if there was any debt. And so, I'll just point out, on the capital assets, really the biggest change is that took place this year. Um, I think you had a water tank that's, um, was construction in progress around fifty-three thousand, that somebody went out for the well, and you had improvements to the city hall. And the city, or the senior center, I think, was the biggest one, around two hundred thousand. And, and a little, then some various other projects that were around a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So, those are the main things you have there. On page eight, just a couple things to point out, like I mentioned, the ARPA money, if you look at, toward the top of page eight, under the governmental activities, there's that four hundred eighty thousand. It shows us a liability, that's the ARPA money that you received. And when you commit that money to be spent, then that'll be recognized in that fiscal year as, as revenue and the expense, um, when that takes place. The reason it shows us a liability is because if you didn't spend it by, I can't remember what year it is, two thousand twenty-four or so, you have to commit, twenty-six, you have to spend it. Um, it shows liability, 'cause if you didn't use it, it has to be sent back. That's why it's a liability until you recognize the revenue. Down a little bit further, right in the middle of the page, one, one other thing I probably should point out, you see that, that, that pension liability, it's negative? Looks really funny to have a negative liability, but at the end of the fiscal year, this year, Percy actually was just over one hundred percent funded, um, just the way everything worked out, the actual, um, studies and everything, it's the first time I've seen that, which actually has created a negative liability, um, for the end of fiscal year. Like usually Percy's around ninety percent, um, a little over ninety percent funded, which is really good, it's probably one of the best for a once in the country. Over on page fifteen, this is where you have your fund base statements, um, just for your information, so it's the major funds that are included, revenues and expenditures, so, your general funds had revenues over expenditures at fifteen thousand, street fund increased a hundred and twenty-two, state revenue sharing a hundred and forty-eight, bond repayment fund eighty-six, and then total other governmental funds, which would all be listed behind the footnotes, and I won't take time to go through those. But, and the same with, um, you've got urban renewal areas, you've got two of those, um, being reported. So, when you go through these financial statements, it's easy to kinda get lost, because you have the city and the footnotes for the city, and then you have the component units for each urban renewal district, and also footnotes dealing with each urban renewal district, and then the, the other funds in the back, so, just so you're aware of that. Um, on page seventeen, there's one column, it's got your sanitation, water, and sewer funds, and then it says other enterprise funds. Those other enterprise funds are your water and sewer reserve funds. And then there's separate information in the back of the audit that shows, um, any changes during the year in each of those funds. And then on page nineteen and twenty, on the statement of cash flows, this is where I look, just to see cash-wise, how everything, um, turned out in these enterprise funds. So, right in the middle of page on nineteen, it shows that in the sanitation fund, well, let's see, now I'll make a one more. It's on page twenty-one and twenty-two, it's about that. Cash increased in the sanitation fund, um, forty thousand during the year, um, and that's pretty much all provided by the operating activities. The water fund actually provided two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, but you had some other expenses that came out of that fund, so your actual cash increase for the year was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, sewer was forty-nine thousand. And so, this gives you an idea, so if you see, in the operating funds, there's a, there's an operating loss, like the sewer fund of thirty-two thousand, it's depreciation expense that's creating that. Um, the rest of this, this is the details on these, on the, on the statement. The very back is, uh, another opinion letter, and our letterhead, it is dealing with internal controls and compliance, that's the, um, controls or, or which are required by YOLOs, management and budget, or GAO, that they have this, and if I had any findings on the controls, I would have them listed back there, but we don't have standing. So, yeah, the records are good, I care that's supposed to, or exposed to, or we found what we needed, and it's kind of things, so...
Sandy does a good job.
Any questions?
I don't have any, I think, I think that's you, pretty good shape. Thank you.
Thanks, Earl.
Thanks, Earl. Thank you, Earl, appreciate that.
Thanks, and then I will get the signed back to you, I've got the invoice, I'll see you now.
There's the ones that's on the sign by somebody's disentail.
Thank you.
And on the second end, we go ahead and approve that twenty twenty-one physical audit, all in favor, green paper. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Farrell, see ya.
Okay, next on the agenda, Lyle Barney. Did you catch the Reader Digest version for you?
That was actually I think it's someone else that lasts a little long.
We have to, so that's why I feel like Reader Digest version is.
So myself, Lyle Barney, and Ben Porter are the current chiefs of Shelley Perkwood Response Unit. And it was established in nineteen seventy-six. Because we live out in the country, and waiting for an ambulance at that point was twenty-five, thirty minutes. And we didn't have any medical personnel, so people from Perth and Shelley communities got together, took E M T classes, and became the E M Ts. We've been volunteering our time, I mean, there's hundreds of the E M Ts that have volunteered their time since, I've been in eleven since nineteen ninety-one. That have volunteered all these years, all these hours. In the first year I was in there, we had two hundred and seventeen calls. Now, last year, we had seven hundred and sixty-two calls. So everyone is seeing the population grow. And as we see that, right now, Blackfoot and Idaho Falls, we have agreements right. So Idaho Falls would pay approximately a hundred and one thousand dollars a year with a three percent increase each year to come down to our community and provide an endless service. So what we do is cure you is when we're dispatched, the ambulance dispatched, we get to the scene, we get the patient ready to be transported. Okay, sometimes we go in the ambulance, depending on how bad it is. And so in Blackfoot, we don't actually pay them, but part of the allocation of the revenue that comes from the tax levy gets held back in state law. Okay, that's a hundred thousand dollars a year for Blackfoot, and twenty thousand dollars a year for ambulance upgrades. Last year, Blackfoot responded to one hundred and eighteen calls. Of those hundred and eighteen calls, they transported sixty-eight people. So if you take a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and divide that by a hundred and eighteen, you're making over a thousand dollars per response. And with Idaho Falls, if we pay a hundred and one thousand dollars to it, they had five hundred and thirty-three responses. And take the hundred and one thousand by by five hundred and thirty-three responses, it comes out under two hundred dollars. So we are able to provide the same service with a quicker response within our community. So right now, what we're doing with the allocation of the state of Blackfoot, and what we pay Idaho Falls, that would go back to our fund. So currently, what we see, every, well, this last year, we see two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that came into our account for the cure. So that is to run two quicker response units, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Volunteers, eight years ago, no longer, one hundred percent volunteer. They had paid twelve dollars for each twelve-hour shift, so they still volunteers. So what, what we're doing is we're presenting this to you guys who are answering questions, but we can provide the same service with quicker response. And I know that I talked to Mayor Pascal a little bit about it. And what do we come up with, twenty-two minutes average response time for Idaho Falls? Okay, it's not their fault. Everybody's number of responses is going through the roof. And they will provide us an ambulance as long as we need it, if it's available. Same with Blackfoot. Okay, so there, sometimes there are some delays. So we're trying to get ahead of the curve, because we know this population's going to go way up here soon. So what we're doing is asking for your support on our proposal.
Okay, so I, I guess me personally, I want to know, you've got to have three ambulances, ambulances, one brand-new one, and one that can be a year or two old, and one that can be older than that. So where's the money coming from to purchase those ambulances?
Well, we've been to the county, Bingham County, about three times, but and we have a grant in for the ambulance that we haven't been denied yet. And we'll be able to find out August or July, that was excited.
And that's not through the county, that's through?
That'd be the state, state of Idaho.
Well, don't, don't tell them you're with Shelley, and you might have a chance.
Oh, is that how that works?
Yeah. Because we don't do very good at getting grants.
We actually have really good support through the state EMS, because they know that we're a rural area, and they're, they're open to giving us grants. They gave us a green light on getting an ambulance two years ago. But you have to go through everything to make that happen. So we have a budget here, we'll share with you guys. There may be some changes, because this is still a rough draft. I'm sure we'll go back and see the county commissioners again. But if anybody has any questions, we're more than happy to answer.
Okay, so give, give me a ballpark, what it costs for an ambulance?
Anywhere from two hundred and twenty to two hundred and eighty, depending on how they're equipped, how long the box is on the standard, or if it's an extra long box. We are looking at about two hundred and twenty thousand per million.
And then what about the one that can be used, I mean, a year or two?
So our thoughts are to be able to pick one up, a surplus from I N L, somewhere like that. And the current figures that we're seeing are between forty and fifty thousand, correct? If, if we can get them, and we got to get them. And then there's other ambulances that are available for that third ambulance. And really, all that is is saying you have that backup, so you really do have two ambulances if one of them goes down.
How much does it cost to outfit these ambulances with medicine or anything else?
Well, so right now, because we are pretty equipped as an ambulance at this point, we just do not transport. That's the only thing that we don't do, is we don't transport. And at this point, we do not have paramedic medics in the firehouse. And as we get paramedics involved and we go ALS, then we would have those. But that's, that's pretty minor cost. I was talking to a few paramedics, and they said that's really a minor cost, what that medicine costs. So right now, we're currently using about fifteen thousand dollars a year for our medical supplies. So that includes A D pads, all your trauma stuff, monitors like pulse ox, things like that. And then our splints, traction splints, vacuum splints, suctioned, all, all the things it takes to just keep rotating through. And we do IV supplies as well.
Okay, so Dan, explain how you get a man and everything. I mean, I've already talked to you about it, but I won't have to understand. I guess I want the whole community to understand that.
Correct. So currently, we have four paramedics in the Perkwood Response Unit. They cannot run as paramedics, because we're only licensed at this time as an advanced E M T unit. So they run with us, they will continue to run with us as this goes to the ambulance. So the way we have it set up right now is twenty-four hour shifts once a week. So that would take seven paramedics and fourteen E M Ts. And then our backup to that would be, we have the suburban, which is our unit two. So the paramedic, we got a call, would jump into the suburban, go to the call, determine whether or not it was a B L S, which is basic life support, or an ALS. If it was a B L S, then the two E M Ts could transport. If it's an ALS, the E M T would bring the unit back to the station, the paramedic and one E M T would go to the hospital. And then we would have a person that was on call, so as soon as we got dispatched out with the first ambulance, that person would be notified to come to the station. Because there's a lot of times we have two calls back to back within two or three minutes of each other.
Okay, so I was writing notes, so I'm, I'm just making sure. So if they're, if they're sent out and it, and they don't need a paramedic, then the five E M Ts get transported. If they need a paramedic, it'd be one paramedic and one E M T.
Correct.
And the other one would take the other.
Would, would take the Q R U unit back to the station, and then you would bring in another E M T or man, whichever, to cover until they were back.
Okay. So like, I guess, I, I'm assuming you have a business plan of some type, like it's going to cost you so much to run twenty-four hours per these, these seven paramedics at twenty-four hours, I mean, it's broke out. And then fourteen E M Ts plus, you know, field cost, I mean, do we have a complete breakout of what the budget is?
So this is what we did a month ago. Like I said, we still have the documents tonight, but this is a rough draft that we're working at at this point. There are five copies, there are six copies.
Oh, there are, okay, I thought it was all together.
No, no. I just have two more, so I can answer you.
Okay. I thought I had to share.
Pete, can I back up too, make sure I understand, understand the whole thing? I want to understand what you're asking for and what, what you're proposing, you know? So through the, the taxes, through the levy, there's an assessment goes to Shelley Perkwood Rescue Year. You say that's about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That's where we're at last year.
Yeah, and it can change, but that, so that's roughly where we're at. And then you say that you use that money in part for our local operations, but then you also use a, spend a significant portion of that to pay Idaho Falls for ambulance service, pay Blackfoot for ambulance service. And is that right?
So Blackfoot, we don't.
Don't, you don't pay them, but they withhold it?
It's part of the allocation, yes.
Indirectly, we're paying them, we're paying them. And what you're saying is, is what you'd like to do instead is instead of paying them, we just buy our own and use our own and have our own, we wouldn't rely on them. We'd still transport to their, to the area hospitals, but we would have our own ambulance service. Is that what you're, am I understanding this right?
Yes, you, you are, we would have a air agency
Sure, sure.
agreement with Idaho Falls and Blackfoot.
But you, but you, we would own our own ambulances. We would staff our own agencies, all that sort of thing. Instead, instead of letting Blackfoot withhold the money and us sending money to Idaho Falls, we just take care of ourselves. And what, what role does the city have in this? As far as like, what are you asking the city to do?
Well, they're a big part of the community. So getting the support of the citizens of the whole community, the city, and, you know, everyone is part of it, because we have to have the acceptance of the fact that we are able to provide the same service for the same cost.
Yeah.
But we're going to provide a better service, because we're going to be able to respond.
So this doesn't like increase taxes for the?
No, so right, this right here is based off of where we're at right now. So our tax levy is really, really small. It's like zero, 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 point three five percent or something, it's, it's less than one thirty-one percent. So that's where we come up with that small budget. So we have in one of the Bingham County Commissioner meetings, there were some representatives there from the state of Idaho Legislature. And we, not just, not just us, but Blackfoot, everybody proposed that where the ambulance district in nineteen seventy-six was used all the time, but now very seldom used, that they reversed those two. So it doesn't change your taxes, it just reverses how much the library would get and how much the EMS would get.
So who makes this decision about whether or not you can make the change, is it the county then?
No, no, that's state. All we did is just ask them to look that over and see if that was a possibility.
But in terms of deciding how you can spend your money and whether or not you can provide a local ambulance service rather than relying on those, who, who, who do you have to ask permission for to do that?
Well, we've been going through the, the county commissioners, because we definitely need their support. If we had all the funds and we got the green light from the state of Idaho.
So it's the state that sets your budget, it's the state that decides how you can spend it too?
No.
I'm just not, I'm not clear on what, I mean, support, I get, I get the idea that we want community support. I think the concept, everybody, I think likes the idea of having better, more, more accessible ambulance services. I just don't understand what you're asking the city council to do.
At this point, nothing other than support us.
Okay.
And, and you can ask Chief Mower, I mean, over the years, you've seen things grow and, and the number of calls.
Oh, sure, yeah.
So I've been in here for thirty-one years, and I, I just, we talked about it two or three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's time.
Oh, and please don't misunderstand me, I'm not opposed to the idea at all, I just want to make sure that I'm clear on, is this just for informational purposes, or are we asking the city to do something, or is there something?
Well, you have a million dollars, but I mean.
He probably already told you no on that one, right?
It's interesting, I knew there was a library district, and there was a, there was a fire district. I didn't know there was a Shelley Perk ambulance district.
Yeah, the, well, yeah, the, the Q R U, I think I've seen that on my taxpayer.
Yeah, Shelley Perk ambulance.
Okay.
But we're talking about just changing the way you spend your money in order to provide better local service, right?
Yes. So we're here because we want to present to you that we have a plan to be able to provide the same service we're getting from Idaho Falls and Blackfoot, the same cost, but of course, the response.
We have my support.
I'm all for it, yeah, for sure.
So we're, we're four to eight minutes, depending on where the calls are. So one thing we have right now that we wouldn't have with the ambulance is we have Q R Us on each end of the district line. Okay, that's enough. So respond somewhere in there, but everything would be coming out of the Shelley Fire Department at this time, no.
The ambulance.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And it would be staffed.
So would the ambulances be going to, would you still use the same dividing line where they go to life for this, for Idaho Falls?
Well, we have discussed that, but there's never been a decision made on that, because right now, we go clear down to three fifty north. And if we're setting up a fire station when the call comes in, we're about fourteen minutes to there. So we're not really helping anybody too much. Plus, Blackfoot ambulance, here we go there too, so it doesn't make sense to have two ambulances. So we have asked them to look at changing the lines. The line that we've talked about would be six hundred and one. And that'd give us about eight to nine minutes to that.
Well, six hundred north, I thought of, you made it much to the Idaho Falls. Excuse me. Plus the north end line.
Okay, so Blackfoot responds from Blackfoot to eight hundred north. Everything north of eight hundred north now is Idaho Falls, third county line. Uh, well, we'll still have support from Idaho Falls and Blackfoot, it's just that we won't be funding them from that year. The only thing we will be doing, and there'll probably be more with Idaho Falls and a little bit of Blackfoot, is if we have a major incident and we need more ambulances, that we would have some kind of a agreement that maybe we'll pay them five hundred dollars for them. And we have to have some kind of funding.
How much of the cost of your operations is covered by the, the patients, the persons that receive the service and their in, and their insurance, whether it's private insurance or the state health insurance?
At, at this time?
Yeah.
We don't charge anybody any, we run off of that budget. We are volunteer agency, so everything that we do is for the community.
So when you have an ambulance service, that will change that.
Yeah, because that revenue would come in.
Yes, but the thing is, is you're paying there, you're paying Blackfoot.
We don't get charged.
Idaho Falls.
Well, they don't know, because they don't have our.
But it's.
Right, right.
And somehow we wouldn't.
They had an emergency charge.
So we're keeping the funds local. And to answer your question, sir, based on Medicare, Medicaid, they're all on different levels on what they pay. It depends on what you do, do you do an I V, do you do an A P.
Yeah.
Um, there is a new, uh, what was it? It just, it just got approved anyway, it's ground transport. And so let's say that you did a transport with somebody that was Medicare and you billed them twelve hundred dollars. And they said, no, we're paying you three hundred and twenty. Now that ground transport that they just approved through the state of Idaho would pay you some of that difference. So it would take you up to maybe five or six hundred dollars. So it would make it worthwhile to do the transport, where right now it's ground to fly line.
Just that the state has decided, they've created another source of money to help pay the expense of doing that.
And there's sixty-seven percent of the state of Idaho that is underfunded in their EMS.
I believe that.
So we asked the representatives to also take that to voice. And we haven't really seen anything from that, but I did see an article that was posted in the EMS News that they are looking at it. So there's, there's things that the state is looking at to try to improve the tax levy without increasing the amount to the citizens.
So at this point, you've gotta get the county, kind of to buy off on an amnesty and make sure these numbers are all right, and you can actually get an ambulance for this, I mean, those prices, things like that.
Correct. We, we do have ambulance quotes, but as you know, the price of them stay in the same very long.
Yeah.
Uh, we got a quote in December and they said, oh, by the way, it'll go up eight percent again. And so right now, we're going with that initial eight percent. We are just going through all the channels that we fill are correct to be able to get the support not only the Shelly community, Burke community, but the whole county.
But once you get these new ambulances, how will you, how will you pay depreciation off of them?
So if you look down here, see where it says ambulance one, there'd be thirty thousand dollars that would be put back into a fund.
Okay.
Each year to replace that. So it'd be like a five to seven year replacement. And then ambulance two, we would be putting fifteen thousand dollars a year away. And then ambulance three, seventy-five hundred.
So the revenue for that's coming from, coming from the transport of patients.
Correct.
The hospital. Insurance.
And then our vehicle maintenance is, we figured that five thousand, and that's just your oil changes, your, all the, the general maintenance on them. So if we put thirty thousand dollars away every year, we'd buy the ambulance every seven years without, without having to pay anything else.
Okay. Um, I think, kind of keep us informed as you go, we have to see what's happening on the phone.
Thank you for your survey.
Yeah.
You have, yeah, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
All right, hey, thanks, while.
You have, thank you.
Next, Kim Adams, who just served program. Read her thesis.
Of course. That's your top page. Okay, um, so your front page is just a brief summary of what happened this year and compared to the numbers we had this year. Um, the information that stands out to me, um, and probably led to you, is last year we had a total number of four hundred and three participants, participants from Shelly and Burke, and we had around twenty-three public. And, um, I estimated that should be about six hundred and four, um, hours, volunteer hours. So if you're looking for any kind of information, kind of, we missed that, so we'll look at it. This year, it increased significantly. And, um, kind of this increase, well, the increase is we have forty-one volunteers. We had about six hundred and seventy-seven participants, and that equates to, uh, a little over a thousand hours of volunteer hours. So, but that's a mistake, um, it's not just Shelly and Burke that's included in that six hundred and seventy-seven. So this year, we expanded it into a Blackfoot also participated, so it's actually a county-wide, um, volunteer opportunity that was available. And so that's where some of the numbers jumped from. But just in Shelly and Burke last year, we had that hundred, uh, four hundred and three, um, participants. And this year, in Shelly alone, we had four hundred and twenty-five people that participated, um, in the spring service event. So it was, all in all, I think, I felt it was a really successful, um, event that was held, it was well-supported, and the community seemed to really enjoy it. Um, so I really wanted to first of all thank you for partnering in that, in that spring service event. And to congratulate you, it was very good. So going on, going to next year, I'm just wondering if you would like me to, to continue that event? You okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
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 Um, the next thing is, one of the things we added this year was the kickoff event. We all did the breakfast fundraiser, so I'm wondering if you would like to continue to do the fun, or the kickoff event? If you want it to continue to look like this, like a breakfast fundraiser kind of thing? Or if you'd like to change it up a little bit?
I'm okay with taking turns, like, I think it's a good idea, like, we did it for the, for our participation, but like, next year, maybe you could have, like, a heart-to-hand, be the ones that do it, and it would go to them, kind of thing? So I'm okay with sharing and having other nonprofit organizations take their turn. And so you can still do the breakfast, but it's just not on the city all the time, and you can share into that. This is a thought I have.
I, I think, I really like that idea. I think the advantage of having city council do the event or host it is that, again, if it's a city event, your faces are out in front. So you are at the city parks greeting people, which is, and thanking them to participate, but this is just an additional layer of, like, this is your, and you're owning it. But I love the idea of nonprofit organizations and being able to benefit from that. And maybe there are maybe the backup, or your volunteers.
Can't we still be the host of it, but still get done with charging the breakfast?
Hey, you can negotiate that, because you were in charge, you said, of the.
Especially if you're mayor, right, you're at the event, and they're, I think that works. What do you feel about that?
I thought it was a good turnout.
Yeah, I gave mine.
Okay. Yep, so for first year, I think it went really well, you had about a hundred and seventy people come to the breakfast, you earned thirteen hundred dollars, around thirteen hundred dollars, which is great, um, especially for a first time event. People didn't know. As much as we tried to advertise this, if the information still, that people were still on the way, they go to breakfast, try.
Well, if we were to include bacon and probably.
It's totally good.
It's totally all the carbs.
And there might be other locations where it'd be a little bit easier to come to breakfast from, um, as if you can.
They also depend on the weather, let's be honest, when it's cold outside early in the morning, well, the light will come out, it's cold.
It's true.
Yeah.
It's true. So other communities do like a lunch instead as like a closing event. Um, so that's another option if you're, you know, as a, as a closing event on a community. So something we can have a mixture. So, all right, the next pages in the packet, I'm not gonna go over them. One is just flyer that was created, and then the other, the many pages are just a breakout as to where exactly the, um, projects happened in Burke, Prairie, and Blackfoot area, and how many people came. And I just think it's the record for you to know what's happening in other communities and how many people are showing up for them. And then how the plan for next year, you know, how about, you know, some papers about next year, to know where the projects were. Um, I really liked that we had indoor, an indoor project, and it was well-supported, it was a retreat this year. And that was one of the expansions was, um, last year we just had outdoor cleaning events, but we have people who are mobility challenged and can't come over and pick up things, but still wanna participate. And so that allowed them to participate in the.
I just want everyone to know that Chris Michael found ten dollars when he was picking up litter along the train tracks.
Oh, yeah?
They just gave you back while they're. Thank you.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Did you pick up the little trucks across the street for a while?
That's where it was, too. Was it for the?
I, I, I think I dropped it.
I'm sure you did.
I don't think you picked up ten dollars across the street.
Okay. Next on the agenda, this is the one I love. Uh, consider amending ordinance regarding chickens. Well, before we amend anything, we've gotta have some very strict language.
I agree.
So I guess.
I'm sorry to speak up, I'm sorry.
No.
Chuck, don't look at me like that.
Hey, hey, as the mayor, I can, I can change it, I'm, so, no, um, so I feel like we need to kind of come up with some, we can't expect the police to enforce anything if we don't have it in writing and specifics. So we've gotta come up with specifics of licensing, accountability, all that kind of stuff.
So if you, if you look at lots of other cities, Idaho Falls and Idaho Falls, being a great expert, a lot of them have a lot of the same parameters, six hands, no roosters, they have to be, um, a lot of them don't necessarily require permits to have chickens. Um, we may, you know, we, we could choose to do that if we want to, um, but, um, they can't sell their eggs, they can't be slaughtered on their land. I mean, those are really pretty much most of the same thing, that they have to, a lot of them are fifteen, like fifteen feet off the property line that a coop has to be, and they have to be, they can't free roam. I mean, there's a lot, and they're, they're pretty much all the same as far as parameters go.
So I hear a lot, I hear a lot that, like, people want us to talk about the chicken things, does it serve personal property right? But it's also the neighbors' personal property, when those people don't take care of the chickens, and there's a smell, and they're like, so there's two entities here that we're trying to protect. So if we go forward with it, I want it to be written that they have to have neighbor, neighbor approval.
And, and we can do that, but, but we've always said, we, we don't have dog problems, we've got dog owner problems. Well, this is gonna fall in the same category.
But I don't wanna pass anything if our police are not going to, like, if we put a hard, this is the consequences if you foul up, then we, I, we want the police officers to follow that.
Well, I think it's one of those issues where I don't think you're gonna have a lot of screw-ups if you, if you put in at the very beginning the parameters that, that we've suggested. One is that we have a permit system. Because that requires that those who are serious, that wanna have chickens, we're gonna get the neighbors to sign off on it. Number two, if you have a coop, it's, it's fifteen feet away from the, from the side yard, it has to be a coop that's built, constructed to standard. Um, you have a permit system where you're given a permit, so not just anybody can go out and get a, that's come down and just yell, get a permit. That's gonna make it so that everybody that goes up to.
Cow ranch.
Cow ranch in the springtime, isn't gonna see a bunch of chickens come home and click up our box in the backyard and say, hey. You know, um, it's gonna leave it to the serious people who live who have chickens. So I don't think it's gonna increase the number of chickens. And I don't think it'll increase the problem.
And I don't think the permit has to be expensive, right?
It's just, but it's just a cost.
To cover sandings.
What are we using the fees for? Why are we charging them fee?
Because Sandy's gonna have to call the neighbors to approve that their signatures are correct.
Wait, so where we're, where we're at right now.
Oh, not rice.
Where, where we're at right now is chickens are not allowed in the city, right?
Right.
And so you're considering changing that.
Correct. Well, well, two are considering it, and the rest of us are on the fence. All right, three are considering, one is not considering.
Okay, no, that's, no, that's fine, that's fine. That's what I'm just trying to figure out.
I like how you said on the, like, I'm picturing a chicken.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, there wasn't a lot of detail provided for this agenda item, right, packet, so I didn't know what, really what we're talking about here. So we're talking about changing it to allow chicken.
Correct.
Yes.
So, so my biggest thing is, if, okay, as soon as the first person gets a permit, the first ten people get a permit, we're gonna have twenty to fifty people that'll get chicken without permit. So what's the fine gonna be if they don't get the permit? Because that's the big issue. Is it a hundred dollars, is it two hundred dollars? I mean.
I, I wanna say a hundred.
Hundred dollars.
Because.
You have to make it steep enough to where it, it hurts them.
Yeah.
That's why I'm taking care of chickens, but.
I can imagine, I'll.
But I don't think there's gonna be that many chickens if there's a permit system.
I'll tell you what, I just totally budgeted, like, hey, chickens, this little chip costs a dollar ten, and this is how much a bag of feed is, and da, da, da. Eggs are cheaper at the store.
If you can get them.
If you can get them.
I had this called Walmart, and they deliver to your house.
So, anyway.
Well, okay, so I, so in County County, we had chickens. And it was by far more because we'd go down and buy it from Burke, Neil, the lay-in, the action. But my wife liked it, and that was okay. But we're a long way from any neighbors. My whole concern is, is I don't have a problem with chickens, but I don't want my neighbor's chickens, which is not gonna happen to me. But it could happen to a lot of other people. Their, their chickens will come across onto the neighbors and.
And then they get a hundred dollar fine.
I think it was a pretty tight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if nobody guesses up to whose chicken it is, what do you do?
The chicken has, has.
Can we brand the chicken?
I don't think that you're gonna have, I think people are gonna know whose chicken is.
Okay, but, so say, and Rod, correct me, say that they, one of them get a ticket, and they go down before the judge, and they say, Judge, that isn't my chicken. How do you prove whether it was? How do you prove whether it was or not?
Faster, and the judge will dismiss it immediately. Okay, well, you have talent, you have talents for chickens.
What's the, what's the motivation for wanting to bring chickens in? Is it an economic thing? So people can, cause I know, egg, egg, the cost of egg is going up, are we just saying that?
It's a free, it's a free, it's a free right to do on my property what I want to.
Right, right, but, but in cities, we generally restrict animals, right? We restrict all kinds of farm animals, we restrict even dogs and cats and rabbits and everything else.
All cities don't restrict chickens or bees.
I'm concerned about what are, what we're trying to accomplish here, and as always, you guys know, this is always an issue with me is enforcement. And, and the, the issues that we're talking about here, I just don't wanna create, open this can of worms, and then all we're gonna do is just go like this. For, every time we try to cite somebody, and the judge dismisses it, the neighbors won't, they, they don't wanna be the bad neighbors, they don't wanna sign the complaint, they don't want, you know, they don't wanna call on them, but it creates tension between neighbors.
But the neighbors want to say, no, I don't want you to have chickens, and then they won't be able to have chickens.
Yes, they're not even gonna say that.
If they'll be that.
They better go to church with them tomorrow.
So, some neighbors, neighbors, neighbor relations can be, we, we all know, that can depend.
My dog know, I've never had neighbors.
Oh, well, you're lucky then, cause neighbor relations can be interesting.
First, a thought about it, a thought. What if, what are we gonna do? Cause enforcement, if a dog kills a chicken.
Dog kills a chicken outside the, the house.
But it depends on who are, whose property they're on.
Should be civil.
Yeah, that's, that's a civil matter. I don't know if we can do anything, but, I don't know, I just.
Well, that, that's my whole thing. I don't wanna turn the whole city into a civil issue because we're saying, yeah, it's okay, and you guys will find out the neighbors. I mean, okay, since two, since COVID, people are getting more and more aggressive. I don't know why, but they get ruder if, in the MV, they're, I don't know why, but there's an entitlement or something. So, the police are gonna deal with that more, the judge is gonna dismiss it every time, so we're wasting our time and money. They're trying to enforce it.
Or not, if we have a permit or we have talents.
When you say we have talents, what does that mean?
You put a thing on their leg.
It's a tag, a tag on their foot.
Tag on their leg, they have to have a tag on their leg. They have to have a talent on their leg.
And who's, who's gonna put that on?
Well, the city leadership, they have to put it on.
Okay, I'm gonna be the bad guy. I, I dog cats for my dogs, and I don't put them on, like, who, how are you going to make sure that they put them on?
Well, and, and just like with animal control in general, we've talked about dogs and the expense of having a full-time animal control officer. Is this just gonna add to that concern?
I think a little bit, um, I don't know, I, I talked to a lot of police officers today, and they don't, they, they think that there'll be a spike when we approve this, but I think it will calm down after a while. And, but I agree with, I mean, with Chief Moore, he, he thinks that, I think the enforcement of it's gonna be the, oh, the question mark.
And, and I, I really believe if that's something that we change and, and do, uh, we're gonna need an, a, a, animal control code enforcement officer to actually track all that and do it, because we will be a whole lot busier, and frankly, with the way crime is right now, the, the officers don't, don't need to be spending, you know, two, three hours in a day dealing with wildly chickens. My, honestly, it's just, in my humble opinion, that's silly.
Well, I think it's silly too, if that were the case, but I don't think.
I don't think it will.
I don't think you're gonna have that with the permit system, I really don't. I think with the permit system, you're gonna have people who are, currently have chickens, are gonna get permits, and you'll have a few others that are serious about it, they'll get a permit, and that'll be it, because it will make it. So, if there's a chicken that's loose in an area, and nobody fesses up, and the other one that has a chicken on the block, you're gonna lose your permit. And you, if you don't put a talent on your chickens, which a lot of people may not do, it's like you don't put a dog tag on the dog, cause your dog, if your dog stays in the yard and doesn't get out very often, you're not gonna worry about it.
And it's a, does happen, and the chickens are loose and running around. Uh, is it gonna be, the officers, uh, do duty to run, run around the neighborhood picking up a chicken that he can't catch? Cause it'll be on Facebook before he can catch the chicken, I sure he's like.
We've been.
No, but people, okay, I don't know.
Aren't, aren't we getting the kingdom?
So, yes, there was a, there was a chicken outside the backyard. Does a police officer have the right to look in someone's backyard to see if they have a coop?
If it's in plain view.
Yeah, if they have, yeah.
Yes.
I think that needs to be part of it.
So then, if they, if they have a coop, and then you count five chickens, and there's number six over here, but then if they don't have a permit, they're getting fined anyway.
If the, if the city really wants to add this extra, if it's that important, then the police department will have to, and, and, and force it, and absolutely will. I just think we really ought to be careful on, is eggs that big of an issue, that we want to add one more ordinance, one more issue, one more problem that we'll have to, have to address, and we won't do it fast enough, properly enough, in the right angle for a citizen that will, will complain, just like with dogs, just like with cats. I, I, I just want the city to make sure they understand that they're gonna open up Pandora's box with chickens, just my opinion.
So I, I, I think to your point, how offensive it is, right? I mean, I think there are gonna be people who won't, you know, because it's offensive.
Okay, so, I don't know, I have a question. Your girls like chickens.
Yep.
You go to your neighbors, and one of them says, no, I'm not okay with it. Are you okay with not having chickens? If you have one neighbor, if you have one neighbor that says no, and then all of a sudden the chickens are there, and people turn you in, are you gonna pay the hundred dollar fine? Cause your neighbors know.
Do we, do we have that in the neighbors' commission?
I want the neighbors' permission, cause I, I don't want to infringe on their property. Cause there, it's just like dog owners, there's people that don't take care of their chickens. I'm sorry, food chickens, they stink. If you don't take care of them and clean the coop and do all that stuff, you don't smell, and that infringes on your neighbors. We can't have a smell ordinance, cause what smells really bad to me might not smell that bad to you.
Right. The other complaint you will get is when the chickens are popping out an egg and they get squawking, you're gonna have all the neighborhood dogs barking. So you will get complaints of dogs barking because that chicken's popping an egg out.
And then just like with the dogs.
Seriously though, right, they start squawking and stuff, and you get all the dogs barking, and the neighbors imagine dogs bark, are barking.
So now we'll, we'll have to, so the police is doing their job properly, we'll have to make sure we go out. They're legal to have chickens, so now we're gonna have to cite them for, uh, noise issues, just like with, with a dog. They may not call us, they'll complain, they'll want us to do it, right, dogs, we'll get out there, we don't hear nothing, we can't do anything about it, but yet everyone is in trouble. I'm, I'm just trying to play both sides, so we make a good, solid decision, cause once, once the council says, yeah, I promise you, it will go like lava.
I, I know it will. So, we know that we have several people in the community that do have chickens. Do we have anybody calls in and complains about the clucking chicken?
We did one, the police officer had to go out, and they had lobbed chickens in their backyard, and the neighbor could hear them clucking, and they had to get rid of them.
Yeah, yeah.
So far though, I only know of one.
Uh, that was the, the one you and I were visiting with, that was a, a big one, yes.
Correct. Years ago, there were issue, when, when there were more chickens that were ground bothered in, I would get complaints on the smell, down on West Pine, of the smell, and I had one guy that was concerned over the, there was some hide disease at that time that people were saying you could get from the, the chicken poop, you know, so forth and so on. That was quite a few years ago that I got that.
Well, I, I think that, I think as you, if, if you go with the route of the permit system with chickens, that you're not gonna open up Pandora's box. I may be wrong, but I doubt that you will. I think that, uh, neighbors will have the right to be able to say at the beginning if they want them or not. If they say no, if they say yes, then they can have, so those people that have the chicken coops will take care of them.
You know, years ago, we had a kennel license that people could have in R one zone, in a single-family dwelling zone, and you had to get seventy-five percent of the surrounding property owners to sign off and give approval to do that. And a lot of them, I remember over in Holly Street, the name of Jean Reed, she always would get it, it always had seventy-five percent, but we had multiple complaints over there from, from neighbors, even though that they signed it. Eventually, the kennel law was taken out of R one, no place in the state, so you can have, a kennel now is in a commercial zone. Can't have them at your home anymore. Um, but we did allow them at one time, but we did have to change that. You know, eh, there, and I know there's lots of people out there with chickens now too, and we really don't get complaints unless they have a lot of chickens. What about, since there's no complaints now, what about just starting out, making it, everything's civil? Like, neighbor's dog eats the chicken, it's civil. If the chicken gets in the neighbor's garden, it's civil. Allow them, let them take care of it themselves.
That, that's related to one of the questions I have, is this, is this really a big enough issue that we need to expressly authorize it and regulate it? I'm not saying that we should like have some draconian enforcement, and if there are already people in town that have them, and nobody's complaining, then, then okay, what's the big deal? Why do we need to, why do we need to then expressly authorize it and then try to regulate it in order to enforce it? You know what I mean? It, it, probably because there are some people who wouldn't get chickens unless it, until it is authorized by the city. I can see that, I can see that, um, but I just, I'm, I'm questioning, I, I always, I always try to do cost benefit analysis in almost everything that we talk about. My practice up in Alphalos, here, everywhere, and I'm just seeing the cost of this in terms of, uh, regulation and management and oversight and expense and manpower and everything else. Is that going to justify the, the benefit that we're trying to, to provide? I don't, that's, that's, I think, the question for the council.
Well, and I look at it, that the people that have chickens, that they know that they're not supposed to have chickens, so they're pretty careful about paying attention.
Probably even, maybe even more careful than if they had a permit.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, I don't know that, I'm just.
If they have a permit, then size eleven, so.
I don't know.
I, I believe personally we're open to Pandora's box, but that's mine.
You would be okay if we had code, code enforcement officer or an animal control officer, you'd be okay?
As long as we had a way to control that. That means that, that basically, the code enforcement officer, if they have a permit, they have to sign a thing saying, yes, the code enforcement officer can come in my backyard at any time and see that my kitchen's within fifteen feet, and I only have six chickens, or whatever it is. I mean, there's a whole list of things they have to be complying to, but we need another officer to do that.
Sure, I know.
Playing the devil's advocate for a minute, you say all these other area cities allow chickens. Maybe the concerns that we're talking about here aren't materializing in other cities, maybe they are. Have we asked any of these other cities how the, the process has gone? Like, we know, we know they have it on their books, they know they're allowed it, but are they happy with it? Are they unhappy with it?
They have to have a reach out.
Do they get tons of complaints? Do they get no complaints? Does it work great? Does it work horrible? I.
Well, I know City of Alphalos has an animal control officer.
Well, and is that, is that the key to making it all work? I don't know. May, maybe it works really smooth if you have, I don't know, I don't know. I'm just saying, if, if, we're not breaking new ground here.
Right, we're not.
If, if there are other cities that have dealt with this, what's their experience been? Is it, maybe it's not a big deal. Maybe it's a really big deal. Maybe it's not a big deal if they have a full-time animal control. I, I don't know, I don't know, I'd be curious.
I during my program to an AIC conference, I'm visiting one, I don't know, after they passed it, and based on that, it was the worst mistake I've made.
Really?
Yep. Yep.
Maybe they have, they have an open chicken, chicken, and it's, um, there's anybody who can work with chickens in Alphalos.
I'd suggest that we call the different cities and the animal control.
So you want to say more?
Yep, just, just try to get more, yep.
Are, are we having a meeting on the twenty fifth?
No.
That's, that's up to you.
It's on here today, talk about canceling it on the twenty fourth. Not the twenty fifth, sorry.
Well, I think we can, we can do that, we, we'll get that.
Get some organization.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we table this to our next meeting in June.
I'll say what. And move the second that we table it till the first meeting.
All in favor?
Three.
I'll call.
Oh, you're gonna call them?
That's all.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, who was gonna.
Send it here today, if I can.
Is there a way to send out just a group email? Sandy, do you know?
Oh, to the third.
They used to do it through the AIC website, but it's, they've kinda changed it, so if a lot of people don't respond, it's a more, it's a more cumbersome, but I can try it. We might get a few head spec like that. If you wanna call, then I'll be the, the site.
Um, next on the agenda, recognize citizens before, and any, any of you understand?
I'll say something about the chicken.
Okay.
I just paid seventeen dollars for five dozen eggs. We've had chickens in St. George, we've had chickens in Roosevelt, we've never had an issue. Like, they all allow it. They don't make a whole lot of noise. We take care of our coop, it doesn't stink. Like, I just don't understand why here in Shelley, where it's a farming community, we had to get rid of our chickens when we moved here. You're one of the good owners, but there's so many several that, um. There's so many people in the city that have them. I mean, I talk to people at work, I talk to people, and they're like, oh, yeah, my neighbors have them. But I'm a rule follower, so I don't, because it's not allowed. So if I ask you this, if you had to ask your neighbors to see if you would allow chickens, and they said no, would you be okay with that? I think it's wrong to have to get permission from your neighbors, but the house behind us is a rental, and hand it with us. So if you're talking my immediate neighbors, I would have to.
Well, and that's another question that I had, if we're looking at approval from the neighbors, is it only adjacent properties, like contiguous, contiguous properties? Or is it like within a hundred feet, or within two hundred feet, or like where you?
The kennel license, we did within, I think it was a hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
This would be continuous.
Con- contiguous, so, so if you have smaller lots with lot, high-density housing, you might only have maybe three neighbors that need permission?
Right.
There should be at least, at least four to eight that they'd have to get permission from, cause it'd be just like a very.
Or across the street.
Like, you go across the street to each corner, to each side, to the back, and to each corner.
So the, the cities, I checked, you, you don't have to have permission for any of them.
That's, that's probably.
I don't follow the, in the black.
Yeah, that's probably novel.
Don't have to get any permission.
And, and now based on my opinion off of the fact that we have so many game problems with dogs, it should never end either. But we can't, the police go out and nobody will sign the citation that's called uncompliment, so they can't do anything. But they're more than happy to show up to my office, like, every other week, or Rod's office every other week in compliance. I'm like, well, if you won't sign it, we can't do anything. They get told the same thing every time.
Well, I'll get that information, I'll come back.
I have a question as well. Um, so you were talking about like the smell infringing on people's rights. Um, I was just wondering, cause like, I know the table worm will spread newer out in their field, and I'll smell that in my house when they spread it. So if I were to call on them and.
There's no ordinance.
Actually, I ran into this, cause I live in the county, and they brought in treckles of manure in July across from my house. You call the Department of Agriculture, they have to have that turned into the ground within three days, or then they can get cited.
Well, there are general nuisance laws too, whether it's odors, noises, dust, I mean, you know, there are nuisance laws that are kinda general, they're just more ambiguous, it's harder to enforce. But that's, that's, that's interesting.
The Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting.
I didn't know that, but.
Brent Kirsterson told me that. So I did call the Department of Ag, then I called the farmer, and they had it gone the next day.
Life was better, right?
Yes, it was.
And, and your grass hasn't grown since because he's spreading it over his office?
He's actually across the street. That was just before Fourth of July weekend, and we was having a barbecue and couldn't go outside.
Wow. Chuck.
Stacy, just a real quick question. You, you, the comment was made, we know that there's chickens in town that aren't supposed to be here. Right? Is that, is that true? I don't know, but, but is that true?
Oh, yeah, yes, there is.
Okay. Are we doing anything about that?
No.
Then why are we gonna enforce five or six or twenty or whatever chickens if they have them? We're not doing anything about it now, why are we gonna enforce when they break the law some other way?
Because nobody else is complaining, they're not complaining about it. Their neighbors are complaining about it.
Doesn't matter. The law, the law says that you can either have them or you can't. So if we're not, if we know about it, why aren't we doing something about it?
I agree, Chuck.
I just, just a question.
I, yeah, I agree.
Well, we know that there's people that have chickens, but we don't know specifics. I mean, if we did, you know.
If we know, if we know that they have them, we are, we're aware they have them, they have them, they're breaking the law. Why aren't we doing something about that?
Is there a ticket that can be, what is it? What's, what's the?
Probably an infraction.
Well, Chuck, it's kind of like when you was on the police department, and somebody called in and made a complaint of their neighbor having three dogs.
Yeah.
And you go over there to see if there's three dogs, and you know there's three dogs, but they're only showing you two, and you can't enter their property to see if there's that third dog. That's kind of how, I mean, you still end up with the same thing.
Yeah, but, but then you drive by again and you see three little dogs hanging out at the fence, then you can do something. But you're aware that that property has too many, too many dogs.
You'd have to kind of sit there and wait to get the proof.
But, but, but you are aware that one, two, three, Jupiter, Jupiter Street has three dogs, and everybody knows they have three dogs. So the officer drives by and he sees these three dogs, then he knows that they're there, so then he has to do something about it. But we didn't. No, I'm being honest with you, I didn't either. We didn't do anything about it till we got a complaint. But it's still, it's the law. It's a, it's just, just a question.
What's really tough too, and we've dealt with this before in other situations, and that is, I don't know why, but when we do finally get to that point where there's a validly issued citation, and we take it down to Blackfoot to the courthouse, and these judges don't want to enforce anything, that is maddening. Absolutely maddening, cause then we, cause then everybody's wondering why we do this. Why do we have it on the books? Why are we going to the trouble of enforcing it? Why are we doing any of this, right? Cause then it's just like.
Well, that's why I said, the way I proposed it was with the permit.
Right, but enforcement, we, on the tail end, the good people will come in and they'll pay it, and then we'll, we'll be, it's the problem people on the tail end.
The problem is, is you, you try to avoid having the problem people get them.
Yeah, I just don't know if that'll do it. I guess that's, that's my point, I, I don't know if that'll do it.
Is you have as least amount of administrative cost of the, of the city as possible. And at the same time, you allow them, the people to self-govern themselves by, by making the cost that's high enough. For example, you know, a chicken gets out, you have a permit, every time you find a hundred dollars, you can, you know. People that are serious about having chickens are not gonna be, least abusive about it as if you just had an ordinance, open ordinance for chickens. An open ordinance for chickens like that in Alphalos, you see that being a mess.
Is that the way they do it? That's just, it's just like, they're legal, go ahead and have at it?
We have six chickens.
Everyone's the same way, yeah.
That's the thing, how, how are we gonna raise our roosters? What if they get a rooster? Do they, they're gonna enforce it, or are we gonna enforce it?
There's roosters here in the city, but we can't get some.
Well, they have an animal, they have an animal control officer.
Yeah.
They have an animal control officer. But you know, animal control officer and animal control officers, the judge can get it, of course.
That, that's, that's part of the, that's a big part of the problem. And what really stinks is we're really just, we're really honestly, good owners, and the same with dogs. Good owners are paying the price for bad owners.
Oh, they are.
That's across the world.
Problem is, when you have someone like this lady here, who is a law-abiding citizen.
Yeah.
She gets chickens, she's gonna, she's gonna pay the permit, she's gonna have chickens.
She's gonna take care of them? Yeah. No, probably wouldn't be a problem at all.
And that's what I'm trying to do, is try and build a, I'm trying to build it, a way that we can have this so that we can satisfy these people. I think it's crazy economically, but if they wanna do it, then we do, you know, we have a, a, a process in place that's at least administrative cost, the most, you know, consistent in enforcement, allowing people to self-govern themselves. And I think that's where you do it, and then you don't have to worry about the problem of getting down to a judge, because the judge in Blackfoot, he's not covering anything. That comes in force.
So, so BJ, can, if we put it in our ordinance that it's this much of a fine, does it have to go to court?
Uh, I can't remember what the limits are. For infractions, it doesn't go to court.
Uh, no, on, on infractions, they don't have to, they just pay it one. If it's a misdemeanor, then they have.
What happens if they don't pay the infraction?
That is a, a very good point. It depends on what we set it.
Right, right, but if we put it with, below that limit, where we can set it without it having to be approved by the judge, right? Like a, like a misdemeanor.
What, what exactly would the punishment be? We, uh, cause right now, there really isn't.
Again, it's enforcement too. Like, if, if you have it with, under that misdemeanor penalty amount, um, and they don't pay it, what, what's, what's our recourse?
At war.
And, and say it's different with our.
Is that Jordan?
I didn't say.
Jordan? Oh, is it Chuck? What was it, Chuck?
It's different.
It's tough, I don't know what it is.
With criminal law compared to a city ordinance, it's, you know, you, you don't pay a, a traffic ticket, you get your license suspended.
Right, that's what I'm saying, but I don't know what.
I don't know how, how we would suspend it.
I, I'd love to be able to just tack it on to their property tax bill, but I don't know that that's the way it works.
Yeah, I, I really don't know.
I don't think it is.
What kind of team we would have if they said, you know what? No.
Well, it's, it's no different than, we had a person's property issues, and we gave him roughly a hundred citations. It went down to court, the judge didn't do anything, so we had probably five thousand dollars worth of time into it, and.
And the courts are going through a lot of the older, uh, uh, city codes now that, uh, historically were misdemeanors, and wanting all, all them changed to infractions, become a misdemeanor, you would have to go and see, and see a judge. A misdemeanor is on your record, and of course, we're getting really tired of people with, uh, misdemeanor arrest warrant for a dog park. That's why, uh, the going trend now is a lot of the.
With our back, with our backlog of cases in the courts because of COVID, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be five or ten years before we get to any of these cases.
Well, I, you know, let me come, I, I'll call Blackfoot, you know, and see if Blackfoot is dealing with it and how they're dealing with it.
Well, I, I, yeah, but I know there's several subdivisions that, that are in the county that don't allow chickens. No farm animals. So, so people are moving out of the city into the county subdivisions, and then finding out they can't have chickens. So.
I think that the key is, is to create an ordinance that allows people to self-govern and be responsible enough to self-govern and, and fatter out the people that were, the people that are gonna go do it on a, on a basis where they're gonna be not following the rules right from the nip go. And I think that's, that, that's an upfront cost, an upfront cost, and getting approval from your neighbors, an upfront cost. And, and permitting system, and that way, the, the people will be responsible to get it. And the people that don't, they, they are, they're just, they're gonna be, they're illegal anyway. So that's my personal opinion. Self-governance is the way to go, because it's just like with dogs. Our biggest problem with dogs is that we just want people to get dogs, and they got them to be dogs. And they die, and they bark, and they don't take care of it, and then they don't, you know. It's, and it's ten percent of the dog owners. It's like, the dogs don't lose.
All right, I'd, I'd say more like fifty percent now, because over in Opel Court, everybody's got a dog. And people over there are telling me, they call it the Opel Court ghetto now, because you can't walk on the grass. And I get calls constantly, and it's like, well, you gotta tell your landlord. So, so I agree, self-governing should be what happens, but it's not happening.
Well, because anybody in the dog can have a dog.
Dogs can have dogs.
Dogs can have dogs. Okay, moving along.
Let's move on.
Uh, consider, or, uh, Justin, hiring a groundskeeper or groundskeeper.
Oh, yes, uh, I'd like to hire, uh, Jayden Wild to mow lawns and help us with the parks this year. He's Brandon Brett's boy, um, he's going to college right now. Uh, yeah, anyways, he's very ambitious and willing to work, and he wants to, wants to do it.
All right.
What's his name?
Jayden Wild.
Our friend?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Not anymore.
Our old friend?
Okay, so somebody make a motion.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve hiring groundskeeper Jayden Wild as a groundskeeper.
The movement second is that we hire Jayden Wild as a groundskeeper. All in favor?
Okay.
We started yesterday, thanks.
I thought I signed it.
All right.
Just the one, right?
Yeah, there was just one.
I'll make a motion that we prove the, the stuff like that is stated.
The movement second that we approve the business license as stated, all in favor? Three in favor. Uh, next, consider canceling the meeting on the twenty fourth, May twenty fourth.
So I will be out of town that week. I have to, maybe I have to for nephew's graduation.
Okay.
I, I'll be out of town.
I'll be here.
So.
If it's something that needs to be done, I.
Lee said he would be here, but.
So two of the five of you would be here?
Would be gone.
Would be gone.
Would be gone.
Married, gone, and killed.
Just married, yeah. So you, Lee, and Jeff would be here?
And I can call in, or do it on Zoom.
Yeah, okay.
And I, let's see, the twenty fourth, Tuesday.
The twenty first time maybe you guys have been in town for.
That's graduation week, correct?
Twenty fourth is graduation.
What?
It's graduation week, first.
If you, you guys, you need me to call in on the twenty fourth? Is there, is there a what?
I don't have anything on there right now. I had the, the county, um, Donovan Harrington and Tana Beal and Pam Eckhart wanted to come up and talk about the property taxes and the increase that we're gonna see, and kind of explain that, that they've changed the June fourteenth meeting.
Can I, will you make a motion to cancel unless we need it?
Kinda need to know, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Sammy's planning on canceling.
Yeah.
Right?
Whatever you guys wanna do, I just need to know, cause I usually post it if, like, if the meeting is canceled.
Needs to be, yeah, cause it's earth, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we cancel on the May twenty fourth.
The movement second is we cancel the twenty fourth meeting, all in favor? Three in favor. Yeah, you guys can have your own meeting. Uh, okay, this, this could or not come in front of us again, guys. Uh, where's Derek? What meeting here?
He was.
Consider adopting an ordinance amending the residential estate front setback.
Yeah, he was here, but I'm here right now.
I don't have a thing, but.
Forty-five, I had it.
Sixty-five.
Jeff, do the cheat sheets, I'm my slave. Sandy, will you make note that we need following cheat sheets out of tour?
Did you lose them?
Yeah, we're down.
You lost them, lose them.
Yeah, I, you want me to do it? All right, I move to spend the reading of ordinance number six thirty-four on three different days, and we need the title of ordinance number six thirty-four. City of Shelly, Bingham County, had an ordinance amending the front setback regulations for the residential estate zoning district in sections ten dash two, eight dash two, and ten dash nine, dash two of the city code and providing effective date. So, thank you.
I'll submit.
All right, Jeff. Kim.
Aye.
Adam.
Aye.
Three a.
Okay, I move to adopt ordinance number six thirty-four, um, and ordinance amending the front setback regulations for residential estate zoning district in sections ten dash eight and ten dash nine of the city code, providing effective date.
I'll submit.
The movement second is Jeff.
Nay.
Kim.
Aye.
Aye.
Two ayes, one nay. So it passes. Unless Lee calls in.
Hey Jeff, on the suspension, did you say nay or a on that one?
Oh, you said standing, I didn't read, and I said yay.
You said yay on that one, okay.
Okay, consider amending the specifications on water meters, Justin. Can we not get the ones that we were gonna get, or they're not any good?
Yeah, we can't get them. We've got one order now for thirteen months. I talked to the distributor yesterday, they got four hundred and fifty on order, and they cannot tell us when they're gonna be there.
And the ones that we can get?
The ones we can get are not quite as accurate, but I think it is better than estimating how much water to use. So I guess what I'd like to see is we're going to, um, we still like to keep the census side pearl as our permanent meter, but we are going to allow the zener meter, kind of a temporary meter, until the i Pearls are available. i Pearl meter is about two hundred and sixty bucks, the zener meter is about ninety-two bucks. And so it is a cost to the homeowner, because they purchased the meter. But we, we've gotta do something, and so it's a, it's a minimal cost, we look at it that way, especially compared to other meters that are around for three hundred and fifty, four hundred and fifty bucks. So I feel like this is kind of the best route to go until the meters, uh, that we expect out are available.
Okay. I need a motion. If you go ahead and let me do it.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve the water meters back as stated.
I'll submit.
The movement second is we go ahead and let Justin use the water meters he can get until we can get the better model. All in favor? Three in favor.
Thank you.
Are these specs, do we put those in, in a resolution? Is that what we establish?
We've, we've got a standard that we're gonna have Dave redo our detail.
So it's, that's what I was like, this.
I, I, what I do is, so thi- this is basically adopted in here, and this will, a copy of this will be with the minutes. And then I have a packet that I give all new developers, and this is included in there for them.
I just, I just remember we did, we established some of these specifications by resolution, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, also, Justin, Dave sent me a copy of the street light specs too, and so there was a change on that. Now, I didn't particularly put street light specs on here, but I can add it for the next agenda. Do you remember what it was, though, that we were doing?
Yes, uh, when we did that detail four or five years ago, there was a J-box that was put in there. Uh, after talking to Rocky Mountain Power, they do not really need that J-box in place. So the only thing we did on the light detail was take that J-box out.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and put it on the next agenda.
And then the detail, Dave's saying this afternoon, Sandy, uh, for the water, that's still wrong. We, I gotta, I'll get it tomorrow.
Oh, he sent a second one today, but the second one still isn't the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so don't take copies of them. We gotta get in with them.
Okay.
All right. Uh, consider adopting snowbird disconnection and ordinance.
We didn't, we didn't work that very good.
Well, we didn't ask the, yeah, we'd like to.
What was his name?
Ben.
Yeah.
Ben. Yeah, he is, he's a nice guy. Um, the, the minutes reflected that you wanted to find snowbirds is basically anybody that's gonna be gone out of their house for more than sixty days. And that, that was all that I really saw from that. Sandy and I got to talking about it, and if we really try, there are people that would just check out more than sixty days, and then they would, that would be an end around from having to pay.
If they had a house on the market for sale, or we actually have a lady that bought a home on the. If they had a house on the market for sale, or we actually have a lady that bought a home on East Oak, or West Oak, and then got transferred to North Dakota for her job, and she just pays unoccupied every month, but no one's living there, but she's not gone for the winter. It's just an empty house right now. It's kind of like if they were, you know, how we started doing if they start to build it and they don't have a house there, we're gonna bill them for the monthly. And I think that the only exception we wanted to make is those that are leaving for what we call like a winter vacation, leave during the winter months and go away for six months or so. So we just was talking and felt like we needed a better definition than if they're gone out of the house for sixty days or more.
Yeah. And, and what if they're only gone for a month and then they come back for Thanksgiving, visit their kids and then they, I mean, you know, like.
We talked about that though.
We'd like to, but, but we had, we did talk a little bit of that, but I don't know what the answer was. We talked about it, but I don't know what the.
So are you saying that we, let's say we specify it's ninety days, that's three months?
It's, it's the same thing. What if, what if somebody has our house on the market for three months? Or what if somebody leaves for work and is gone for six months, but they're really not gone on winter vacation? Then, I think, I, I thought, I think we both thought, the intent was because there were so few that were actual considered snowbirds, that that's why you wanted to move forward with allowing that to not be charged, just be unoccupied and then have the disconnect fee.
Yeah, and to make it so that it would define it narrowly enough so it only applies to true snowbirds. Cause that, we said, it's a small group, we'll make this, we'll carve out this little exception, but if we don't define it narrowly, we're opening up the gate again, does that make sense?
So we did, what do you use to justify that?
Two, two things. I think we need to define it in terms of length of time and also time of the year. So for example, something like if people, if people are gone less, gonna be gone for more than a month and less than six months, and it's between the months of like November to April, or October to April, or something like that. I don't know, Chuck, you've been weighing, weighing on this if you want, but.
I think a lot of people leave in October, don't they?
The.
We, we normally leave the end of October and, and come back the first of April.
April, yeah.
It's a five, it's a five-month deal with what we're going.
So if you're really just trying to provide an exception for snowbirds and you want everybody else to keep paying, even if, whether it's occupied or not, then we need to define it more narrowly. It needs to be during winter months, it needs to be for a specific amount of time, that's, that's the direction we're looking.
I was gonna say the winter, during the winter months and then between the month of April to first of May.
So like, um.
So you mean you November or October?
Thirty-first of October that they're gone to thirtieth, fifteenth of, uh, let's see.
April?
Fifteenth of October to.
I would say mid-October to mid-April.
Perfect.
Is that okay?
October fifteenth of April that they're gone and.
So. How would that not apply to somebody who, uh, just pulled a pin on a house in the middle of October?
It, it, it could, and I don't know if you'd also apply, they gotta go like south of the whatever parallel, I mean.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, how do you use?
No, I mean, that, that's, that's the problem with wrestling, like, that's why I'm just saying sixty days.
I mean, the contractor could come in and say that, right?
Yeah.
Paul Mike, when he says fifteenth of October, I'm not gonna use it until the fifteenth of April.
Occupied homeowner, occupied homeowner who leaves his home.
Or a fully, uh, how about a fully built?
Yeah, yeah, it would, yeah, that would be good, cause if it only applied to.
Home that are already built.
Please with a, yeah, with a certificate of occupancy.
And the property owner was the one to leave for that six months.
Probably, uh, occupied home.
Okay, so you have a contractor who owns the house.
You sure made this complicated, Chuck. You sure made this.
Okay, wait, wait, so you have a contractor who owns the house and doesn't give it to.
Does he live there? Is that his residence?
Not his residence.
If it's not his residence, then no. If it's his residence, then.
Occupied, uh, occupied.
I'm just trying to tell you that.
No, 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 I understand, but this is what you don't have to flesh out, so.
Write, no, write up whatever you think we need to write up.
Well, I, we want the direction.
Occupied homeowner.
We need his direction.
Is there anything more?
August, uh, October fifteenth through April fifteenth with no return time between.
No return time, well, sometimes they do it for a reason.
Well, if we're doing it because the water, let's do it in the summer, so that.
See, we discussed that the last meeting.
Yeah.
Because the summer is when we use all the water.
If they come home and we have to send them out there to turn it on again, they're going to have to.
Well, yeah.
Pay another fifty dollars. Another fifty dollars. Each time it has to be turned off a lot.
The cost and throw it back home, like, if that's gonna happen.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Gonna have, they're gonna have to pay.
So, any type of wants, do they want it on or off during those ti- during those months, any owner occupied residents? Is that it?
Yep.
But whether it's a week or a month, or well, it's gotta be for a month, at least a month.
Yeah, we don't wanna curate it down by days.
Yeah.
On a monthly basis.
Okay, that should do it, thank you.
Can we get that done before our four fifteen?
Yes. And I think we're actually gonna set it up so that we have the next hearing because we are gonna discuss the, you're gonna talk about setting a fee for that.
Yeah, we have to have that set on the fourteenth.
Okay.
Okay.
Consider amending the minimum garage size.
Oh, you skipped the pool one.
Oh. Sorry, Michael.
That's okay.
Uh, clarify purchasing pool equipment.
Okay, so.
This is the whole reason why Michael's been here.
I know, the whole time.
It's the only reason.
Hey, I'm just trying to get done, so.
The Aqua Zip has a retrofit that you guys approved that was twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And so when I went to go order it, they came out with a new retrofit with it. It's a trolley number seven. And it's five hundred dollars more, and then the shipping on it is another four hundred and fifty dollars to get it here. So instead of twelve hundred and fifty dollars, now it's twenty-two hundred bucks. So I don't know if you guys want me to, if you guys would approve the extra money to get it here, then we can have the Aqua Zip fixed and done, hopefully, so it won't ever happen again. But it's the seventh time they've fixed it, so who knows? Um, but I did reach out and I have been trying to find pricing on a slide, cause the mayor asked me to look for another type of slide. Um, but I called the health department and they said that depending on how your slide goes, it's how deep your water is. So with being ten feet, we can't go too much higher than eight to ten feet. So high plus you're in.
I don't know about that.
Uh, I was gonna say, have you been to Lagoon?
Oh, yeah, I know.
There are like four feet.
Right.
Of water in your hundred feet height slide.
So I, I just looked into it, plus finding a slide that's like that height, they're, they're, they get really pricey once you get higher. So I just haven't pinpointed anywhere where I can actually get one yet.
Can we have the shop class just fab us something?
Right? We can get the straight slides that just go straight down into the water, that are like ten feet high. But the problem with the one, the old one that we had there that wasn't very high, is the little kids, if they got on it, they'd fall off of it.
Yeah.
The sides were very high, but I'm still looking into the slide thing, if you guys wanted me to go that route and try to find some other piece of equipment to put in place of the Aqua Zip.
Well, we fixed it so many times, the Aqua Zip that we bought, it was supposedly the latest and greatest.
Yep.
And.
And the kids love it. It, when it is working, the line is wrapped around for kids to get on it.
But this new fix that we're gonna spend twice as much as we budgeted for, are they gonna warranty that at all?
So they warranty the retrofit trolley for one year.
Oh, so it's.
Oh, they break within one year?
Yeah, six, six minutes or six miles, I don't know what that deal, so.
That's not a very.
So you guys, I don't know if you guys wanna discuss it later, table that portion of it or whatever you guys wanna do, and I can keep looking at pricing.
Well, if we're gonna order it, we need to order it or it's not gonna be.
Well, that's it. Due to the kids.
So twelve hundred and fifty is what we budgeted and how much you need total?
Twenty-nine fif- nine hundred, so a thousand dollars more.
So twenty-two, twenty-two fifty?
Yeah.
Sell more candy.
I'm trying.
We sold so much candy last year.
Maybe with a better zip line, Aqua Zip, then maybe they'll, they'll sell more candy.
Can't we just go like a zip, just have a zip from the shallow end and don't let go till the deep end?
I ain't talking. Uh, what do you have, you have?
It's one of their favorite things, so.
So make a motion and we go ahead and spend.
I'll make a motion that we put through the thousand dollars more for the Aqua Zip trolleys.
It's been moved and seconded, that we spend an extra thousand dollars for the Aqua Zip, all in favor? Three in favor, okay.
Okay, the other thing we have is the punch cards that we do at the pool. I kinda talked to Sandy a little bit and I don't really, there's nothing really saying punch cards.
What, so we increased the fee last year by fifty cents.
Yeah.
But we didn't do anything with punch cards. A lot of people use punch cards just for convenience, so if they wanna send their kids in, they just punch it and not send them the money. Um, uh, but we didn't, in the past, sometimes we have given, the punch cards was used as a discount. If you was gonna buy a hundred, you got a discount. Now it's more convenience. So do you want it to remain at two fifty or do you want it to go up to three fifty where what we charge right now for it?
Or get rid of them completely.
Yeah, or not have punch cards available.
How many do we sell a year?
So roughly as of right now, we have about forty of them in the little bucket that Pam keeps from like last year. And then on, and out of those forty, probably about, I'd say ten of them have enough worthwhile using this year. And she actually lets people, if they have, oh, quite a few, like if they bought one and they went through it all and they bought another one, then she lets them use it for this year, she lets them use it for basically two years, and then she throws them away. So if the family hasn't come back to use them at all that year, she just gets rid of them. So.
You got your.
I'm okay with giving them a discount, but maybe we should go up half, so go to three hundred?
Go to three dollars. So like on a plan of a hundred dollar punch card, a hundred punch card would be like three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Then you would be, basically the parents would be getting a discount, the kids would be the same price. If you did it that way. And then Pam said that the lap swimmers and the o- o- water aerobics, they use a lot of punch cards. Cause they like to show up without their purses and stuff. They just show up and then use their punch cards to come in. And those are ninety-nine percent of the time adults that, that use that. So if we did that ten punch pass, we, right now it's twenty-five dollars, so now they'd be, they would be getting that fifty cent discount. Or we bump it up to thirty dollars and it's the same price. So basically, so the convenience of having it out, or so you don't have to bring your wallet in, you just buy a punch pass.
You have to tell your punches for those as opposed to.
Exactly, yeah, they're actually like a little card that says water aerobics on it, and all the other ones are like a big card, and you just buy.
And how many is on the water aerobics card?
There's just ten, there's ten.
There's ten?
I'd say we need it the same.
So leave that one at twenty-five dollars, so it's a discount?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the other thing that was, there was, that is, we have, it says large groups, if you have ten or more people coming in at one time, you get a discount. It's only, so it don't be two dollars and fifty cents. Do you guys wanna get rid of that? So, cause then they could buy a punch card, or do you guys wanna, if they bring?
I just get, I just get rid of that.
Okay. Okay. And that's it for.
Okay, I need a motion and all that stuff so we can put it on record. Everything's made right now, it's great.
Can I make a motion if we go ahead and, and, um, change the punch cards to three dollars?
Right.
It would be three hundred.
Three hundred.
Three hundred.
There's a hundred on there, so three, three hundred.
I'll send it out.
All in favor? Three in favor.
I'm making a motion that we, uh, Aqua.
We've already done the Aqua Zip.
No, the water aerobics.
It is water aerobics.
Water, water aerobics.
They would leave them the same.
Leave them the same.
I'm gonna make a motion on that, leave them the same.
Okay, we're good.
Do you have to make a motion to cancel the other ones or no?
I don't think it was ever a fee, I think we just.
Okay, I was making sure. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm just kidding. Um, consider adopting urban renewal.
No, we're back to the garage.
Yeah.
Whoa, whoa.
Yeah.
All right, I'll be the first one in, I'm trying to get done here. I got, I got water to change, man. Um. Consider amending the minimum size for.
Basically, do, we talked about just making it so as we read it, as we read what it's already says, it's gonna be more square footage.
So if we read it as a twenty-four by twenty-four and turn that into a square footage, um, that's what we're going off of right now. Either it can be a twenty-four by twenty-four, or it can be a twenty-four by twenty-four square footage, which would be five seventy-six. And then we talked about putting a frontage on that, a minimum frontage for that garage. Cause if we don't do a minimum frontage, it, it's almost.
You could be.
The ball for.
Yeah, you could be sixteen by.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we left off on that.
I think the minimum has to be, uh, should be twenty feet.
Is that good?
That should accommodate most plans. If you do a minimum of twenty feet, are you gonna change the square footage from five seventy-six? Cause now they gotta have a twenty by thirty feet. If we do a minimum twenty and stay with the same square footage, now they've gotta have a deeper, if they, if they don't go wide.
And is this, okay, is this just for a double car garage or a triple car garage?
This is for any garage in the city or any, any, any resident, any, any garage.
Cause what's, what's frustrating for me is I, like, we were talking about triple car garages, I don't know.
Okay, so the reason why we did the twenty-four by twenty-four was because we had builders wanting to do nineteen by nineteen.
Right, and for just a double car garage.
Yeah.
Right, but where there's a third bay, then we're like, wait, there's a third bay.
We don't break that out in the ordinance, so it's just for, it's just a minimum two-car garage. So if you had a twenty by twenty-four garage, that's four eighty square feet, so could you go a minimum of twenty-foot, uh, front and a minimum of four hundred and eighty square feet? Yeah, whatever you guys would like to set on that.
Well, then are we gonna leave the driveway at twenty-four feet wide, the way the ordinance is, or are we moving it to twenty feet?
I'm still wondering what, again, what we're trying to accomplish. I thought the idea was we want the garage picking up the cart and fit in, so it's not gonna be out on the driveways, on the sidewalks and streets, right?
I see you, the last meeting that you missed.
Yeah, I read, I read the minutes.
Okay, so I was confused in the meeting before, cause I thought we were just talking about a double car garage. And the plans that were turned down were, they had a double car garage with a third bay, so there was really three cars that they could.
Or two and a.
Yeah, and where do we, like.
Or two and a lawn mower. Right, I mean, they had a garage, they had a third.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's like, at what point, like, we talked about the different cities and their ordinances, and they don't usually give you a twenty-four or a twenty, like, it's usually a square footage thing.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so. Cause like, the one, I can't remember what you said, one of them said like, let's say it was a six-car garage, that was a twenty by twenty, twenty by twenty, twenty by thirty, twenty, and it's six cars, yet it wouldn't fit in our ordinance, the way it reads right now.
What do we classify as a third car though? I mean, if you were to break it separate, what are you gonna call a third car garage? Is that a certain size? Or cause it has a second door, or a third door? I mean, we get a lot of them that they do a two-car garage and then on the side they'll do a little eight by eight or eight by ten four lawn mower.
Four lawn mowers.
Has a door going out the back and door up the front.
Mm-hmm.
So if you, if you separate it by a third car, you got, you're gonna have to aside his limit on the third car and on the two car. And that's gonna get way confusing for builders and, and also me as far as reviewing plans.
Well, I know.
I just, I just wanted to keep in mind whatever it is we're trying to accomplish, just, anytime we start regulating.
Parking, parking, just, I thought it was a safety issue that we need parking. Like, cause I'm saying, how the people in Shelley don't park cars in their garage, cause it's full storage.
That is true.
Yes, so it's.
Oh, I'll bet it's, yeah, I'll bet it's more now.
Yeah, so I think as a city, what are we, like, to govern, like.
Right.
I was saying, okay, well, I want everyone to have a king-sized bed instead of a queen-sized bed, so every room should be this size.
And I think that's where we gotta, we gotta ask ourselves, you know, really, what are we trying to accomplish?
Right, and I think as a government or we should like, okay, safety, snow removal, removal of garbage, not parking on the street, stuff like that. So make sure there's enough parking for these cars, and wasn't Lee saying something about, like, Idaho Falls read something like one parking spot off the street per bedroom?
That would place that lots of me.
Yeah.
Try to come.
I don't know.
Let's hope Idaho Falls.
I don't think we should give them that.
No. I, I know some cities that if you're hanging over the sidewalk with the back of your pickup, they give you a ticket in the middle of the night.
Yeah.
Police officers drive around and, I'm not saying do that, but.
Probably won't force it anyway to the court. So I guess I just need to know what direction you guys wanna go, so we can keep, keep moving forward.
Well, okay, so the whole reason we did the twenty-four by twenty-four was Jordan did some research to find out kind of what a standard garage was, two-car garage. Because we didn't want nineteen by nineteen and have, cause there was no parking on the street. So. I'm with BJ, what are we trying to accomplish here?
As it stands right now, it's twenty-four by twenty-four. Those are minimum dimensions, not. As it stands right now, it's twenty-four by twenty-four. Those are minimum dimensions, not square footage, right?
Yeah.
But, but, but this other gentleman came in last meeting and he asked, said, oh, for whatever his reasons were, he wanted to change it to a square footage calculation, not a minimum dimensions, right?
And the way it's wrote, when you and I talked, when we originally done this back in November, we had some issues. You and I kinda talked and the way I understood it is you said you could defend it whether it was a square footage number or a dimensional number, the way it's wrote in the ordinance. You remember that conversation?
Oh, yeah, but. But I'm not saying that's not right.
But at that time, we, you and I discussed to let, we said it for a reason, let's go twenty-four by twenty-four.
Yeah, yeah, I think that, that when you go to the legislative intent.
Yeah, that, that's what it was for.
Yeah, and so that's why we could construe it as minimum dimen- dimensions, not square footage and defend that.
So this last meeting, um, the council, between all the discussion and the council more or less voted, or talked about, let's, let's move forward with a, a square footage of that twenty-four by twenty-four, should be anything over five hundred and seventy-six square feet. Um, is what they discuss, is what we discussed and what we moved forward with.
But we can't. But those were all with three car garages.
Yeah, we can't leave it that way because when we get into. We can't. We have some frontage regulation of, we want a two car garage for a reason. I mean, these people, they're building sixty foot deep homes, they could do a ten foot by sixty foot on the side.
Yeah.
And meet that square footage.
Yep.
So.
But they won't.
But you will get some that will.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they'll get their, they'll, then they get their cars off the road.
That's a way for them to put their chickens.
Even if you grew their own chickens.
Well, let's just leave it, if you get a two car garage, it's twenty-four by twenty-four.
Right, but if it's anything, he's saying, what, you need something like, this is a three car garage, what?
Do we, do we wanna?
What's a garbage, a three car garage?
Do we wanna, yeah, do we wanna open that door? Like, do we wanna have that separation?
I think there needs to be at least one space, one continuous space of twenty-four by twenty-four. If they add something else on that, it's up to them, but there, I, it sounds like the, if I understand what the council's trying to accomplish, there ought to be one area that's at least twenty-four by twenty-four.
And that's. That's where we've had all the complaints perhaps, where this last council meeting, we voted to turn that to a square footage. And so.
Yeah, cause you probably approved a bunch that would not qualify as a twenty-four by twenty-four.
Yeah, oh yeah, I, I probably approved ten in the last two weeks that we went off of anything over a bigger square footage than five seventy-six.
Because they had triple car garages on it.
So if we get this.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're trying to create a home that has a minimum square footage of garage space. We're trying to get cars off the roads, right?
Yeah.
So are we gonna make an ordinance that you have to park your car in the garage?
No, it just needs, can't be on the sidewalk, and that's already on the books, right?
So when they call in and say, where am I supposed to park my car so you can plow the snow, we can say, in your garage. And if they say, I can't park in the garage, then that's on them. They still have to find a place to put their car. At least we can say, that's what your garage is for. We have a, we have something to say to them.
Right, so we need to make sure that we have enough parking.
On their driveway.
On their driveway, not necessarily.
Well, I think that's, that's where we get into the side, the front setbacks discussion.
Yes.
And then the driveway width, right?
Correct.
So we're trying to, yeah, we're coming at this problem in different ways.
And is that what we discussed last time, is it was on the setbacks that we were trying to?
You guys are the ones that reduced the setback. I was against it.
Reduce it, on what?
Just reduce it again.
You could use the setback.
Forty-five, sixty-five.
Sixty-five, sixty-five.
No, but that was on RE, I know that.
But this is for like a citywide ordinance, so we've got setbacks, there are only thirteen on the ground.
So they're saying, so all, you know, all those homes, a lot of the homes out there, right River View, are triple car garages.
Okay.
Right, so none of those homes would fit into our ordinance, or, or a lot of those homes wouldn't fit into our ordinances right now.
And those three car garages, they can't fit the bigger pickups into them either, cause Jordan.
Everybody has a bigger pickup.
Right, but if you went to buy a home, you and I discussed this, you would look for somebody to accommodate your pickup. A lot of people go, oh, I love this home. They don't think about that pickup that's not gonna fit in the garage when they buy it.
But I do.
You do.
But not everyone would do.
Yeah.
I also wanna point out, I mean, we get a lot of people that to accommodate everybody, and we get people out of state, they don't even come over here. They just buy the house, brand new house, they buy it through Zoom, through Facebook, you know, looking at it. That's something you wouldn't, you wouldn't think about until you got here and went to pull.
A lot of them don't have a full size truck, cause they're not coming from a farming community.
Some of them don't, but I don't know, have you seen the roads? There's a lot of full sized vehicles.
I just think it's government overreach to tell somebody what size of garage.
I think, I think we need to be careful of that. That's why I'm saying, let's be clear on what we're trying to accomplish. Cause if we're trying to accomplish that, then okay. But yeah, we're just, if it's just an aesthetics thing and we think, oh, we think everybody will love two car garages, no, no, let the market decide that.
Yeah.
But, but as far as a safety thing, uh, road maintenance, snow removal, those sorts of things, keeping your sidewalk.
You know, we're considering most of this was the approval of the three hundred and seventy-five unit development with sixty-five foot lots. Because with a sixty-five foot lot, you can only fit one car on the street in front of the house. Before you have another driveway, you know, and things of that sort. So you, in that realm, if you, in that world, we, we, you know, we demanded that we needed to have a bigger garage.
Cause there's less street parking.
So and one of the, there were several people that were talking about it, but there's a lot of towns out there that can accommodate, but just having that twenty-four by twenty-four, it throws a lot of plans differently.
Yeah, I don't know that, maybe.
So I don't.
I know some people complained about it. So I know, I know it does mess up some people's plans, but I don't.
I might say we had a lot of people complain, but we also had a lot of people that changed their plans and we moved on.
I do complain about it.
And your people complaining are the ones that get a set of house plans and they wanna build in every city. And so you get plans turned in from Idaho Falls, well, we're in Shale, we're not Idaho Falls, or the plans turned in from Black Forest, because they don't wanna redo their plans, they've already got a kit ordered and they went ahead and ordered it without the approvals, so now it's backfired on them.
Yep.
So if these developers complain about it, that's what's going on.
The ones that you approved, Jordan, you can't fit a third car in the third bay though.
Um, yes, all of them, I, I bet the majority of them have had the third car garage. But the ordinance don't break that apart.
I know, so I don't know how the ordinance should break, I don't know on that one.
And I, like you're saying, if you do break it off a third car, you're gonna have to put a, a measurement on that third car garage. To, I mean, anyone can throw another ten by ten square there and call it a third car garage. And so you're gonna have to come up with a measurement for a two car and a measurement for the third car option. And what difference it makes if you have three cars and you're only a two car garage. And you'll have to, I guess, break all that up in and.
If we come up, if we come up with a square foot, the size of the garage door, that won't affect anything, like, cause they can still make it.
There's usually sixteen and eighteen, yes, that would, that would help.
Well, if you have, most of the houses have a landing and you come out of your garage. And then they have stairs that go down. So if you drive a minivan, you can't park it in a garage, it was too short, too big, too.
I would almost say ninety-five percent of the homes either have stairs that come down or a utility closet in the garage. And usually that utility closet's always in front of that two car door. Which the utility closet's gonna be three to four feet deep. Um, most of your stairs that come out are gonna be anywhere from two to four stairs, which is anywhere from twenty inches to forty-eight inches. That intrude into the garage. So that, that's why back a year ago, we determined the twenty-four by twenty-four to accommodate. And that's outside measurement, keep that in mind. So the inside is only twenty-two foot, eight inches by twenty-two foot, eight inches. And then you approach another three to four feet into that, you're down to only an eighteen foot garage. That's why we come up with the twenty-four by twenty-four to accommodate that.
We needed to here last week, or two weeks ago.
Sorry. That's where, like, I just, I guess I need an answer, what you guys would like to see and what you wanna move forward with.
I'd say that we should go the twenty-four by twenty-four.
Well, that's what I feel, but.
And the, and the reason why is because the the, the safety is a safety issue. We're talking, you know, we're talking about getting cars off streets. And if we have a development that's gonna be, it's been approved, it's small enough, it can have cars on the streets. We're in a seventy-five units, we need to make it big enough that that the cars are off the street and have attention for being placed in the garage. And if people use that or not, it's a different story, but.
Are you saying that for just a double car garage with anything different for a third bay?
You're just saying that for just a typical double car garage, and it's good what it is.
But there's a third bay, do you still want that twenty-four by twenty-four?
Yes.
You still want that two by twenty-four by twenty-four?
Well, I think that's the minimum, and anything they add after that is, whether it's extra big two car, or they call it a three, they're put a third door, or if they gotta have one space that's, will accommodate a twenty-four by twenty-four.
But we can't do that because we already allowed ten people to get building permits that, that have three car garages.
But they did it like the square footage instead of dimensional, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think that was right, but that was. Done, and we need to clarify moving forward. And I don't, I don't care one way or the other, I just, again, uh, keep in mind, what are we trying to accomplish? With any kind of a regulation, it ought to serve a public purpose.
To try to control subdivision that we approved. That's why they're changing that, right? It's cause of one subdivision that we approved to come in. And all the rest of them have to pay for that.
Well. I still think that, um, I don't know. I, I look at my, I guess I look at my own, my own garage, and it's twenty-four by twenty-four. And I, and most garages that I measure at homes are big enough to accommodate large trucks, nice homes. But then again, I don't do these cookie cutter type homes. But any home that I've ever done and I've appraised has got a twenty-four foot wide and it's at least twenty-two to twenty-four feet. If it's twenty-two feet deep, it's pretty tight. Most of them are twenty-four by twenty-four minimum, most of twenty-four by twenty-four. That I've seen. I think your house is probably twenty-four by twenty-six again, with a two car.
So my son could be terrible.
Well, we're, we're at twenty-four by twenty-four now, minimum dimensions. Do you wanna change it or not? Or table it, or do nothing, or whatever, but yeah, you need some direction, right?
Yeah, Jordan's kinda have direction.
Well, I would say that we keep the twenty-four by twenty-four, but.
So if we do twenty-four by twenty-four, it's a two car garage. And if we do a three car garage, it's twenty-four by twenty-four surface with the third car.
Garage.
Actually, I mean, I did that maybe, yeah.
So you're saying, you think it should be a twenty-four by twenty-four garage? Ex- um, except if it has a third car garage.
No, he's still saying it should still be a twenty-four by twenty-four even if it does have a third car garage.
No, I'm saying that if you have a third car garage on there, then you can, you can reduce your two car garage down a little bit because you've got.
Oh.
So it could be surface instead of dimensional.
That, that's not what I'm saying. I was, now, you can do whatever you want, but no, I was saying, you have a twenty-four by twenty-four, and then if you have something more, a third, that's a factor, great, but it doesn't contribute, count towards your satisfaction of the minimum. That's what I thought.
I like the way the mayor said it though.
And that one.
If you have a good car garage, you can switch it.
Okay, but again, if they have it to the square footage and they have it five seventy-six, and they got wide enough for three, but they're all too short and you get them parked out on the road, are you accomplishing your purpose? That's, that's my only question. I personally don't care. But if your purpose is to keep.
And I personally don't think it's up to us to say what's, do you know what I'm saying? If it's just a safety thing, why don't they people are parking their cars in the garage?
So we even care if people have a garage in their house?
Yeah, we, yeah, exactly. That's, it's the same question.
Do we care?
Oh, well, yeah, go to the burger.
If there's not parking, I mean, like, look at all the apartments and everything, there's, they don't have garages.
Right.
Yeah, but go to the burger if you can try and plow the snow.
What's that?
I said, go to the burger if you can try and plow the snow.
The apartments usually have a complex that they have to plug in or something. There's houses in town that had a garage that have filled them in and made them into living space that we didn't even, they didn't pull up from it or anything.
Yeah.
And we don't even know about.
So what's the other cities doing, Jordan, that they're not having problems, but yet they're not setting like the dimension standard?
You see a lot of on-street parking.
They're, they're telling them they can't park on the street, they're telling them.
So that's what the power is, is that you're seeing a lot of on-street parking?
Yeah, you're on-street parking.
Well, you go to the smaller community, that's what you're getting.
And they're not plowing their streets.
Yeah.
And you have safety issues with kids running in and out, you know?
And I think some of the cities that standardized on a certain size of garage, and when the developer comes in and says, that's not gonna work for us, they say, then go ahead and we, we'll get something that will work for you. There's enough developers that are building that they'll build to our standards if we hold that standard.
But a bit, a lot of other places don't have a standardized two car garage.
They just let you build whatever size, eight by ten, eight by six, whatever they would call the garage?
Yeah, there's no.
But like, go back to the same question, do you even have a garage?
Yeah, yeah, who cares?
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying that, no, they don't have that. And they have those issues.
Okay, is there any way to write it that, if it's a double car garage, it's twenty-four by twenty-four, but if there's a third thing, no, cause you're saying that with a.
I just don't know if that's gonna help meet that goal. I, I, I'm still even with Justin. Do you even wanna regulate garage sizes? I'm not saying you should, one or the other. What are you trying to accomplish? And if it's.
I think it's.
If it's to get cars off the streets.
Well, yeah, bottom line is, keep cars off the streets.
Then you need to have big, require big driveways and big garages. That's how you do it.
That is, there you go. You got a garage big enough they can park and shut the door.
Right.
Right, I mean.
Or a driveway that's big enough.
Or a deep enough driveway.
Deep enough driveway, yeah.
Buy vehicles, cause that's what everybody's seeing going nowadays.
And buy, park them, yeah. This is what you guys do in the big bucks.
Yeah.
Good thoughts.
So if you chose to do that and just go off the street by driveway, you'd probably have to change the front setback for our ones of them.
Yeah, and then you'd even need a garage, and you just say you can have a garage or a big driveway.
One thing I can also tell you, um, an average full-size SUV is eighteen feet long. And an average full-size car is seventeen feet long. So you take that twenty-two eight on the inside of a twenty-four feet garage, and you minus four feet off of that, your full-size SUV is gonna touch the bumper to them stairs and.
Touch your garage door.
Well, and even though it's not full-size trucks, there's, there's SUVs, there's full-size cars out there all day long, every day.
But your last contractor that came in, if you look at the minutes, said an average car was fourteen point seven feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I guess maybe an average, if you were to take a tiny compact two car electric car and add that with a truck and everything else, you might get that out.
I guess what I was trying to make is, it depends on who's telling you.
It's telling the story.
Someone could, someone could pull in till he hit the force, you know.
What happens BJ with, BJ, with the ones he just approved this last time, what happens with that?
We move on?
We move on?
Yeah, you're not gonna retroactively rescind it now.
We got nine hundred more homes that come into town, so we move on.
And how many did you approve?
Oh, there's probably ten.
Nine or ten I was gonna say.
I'd say nine or ten, um, that have been approved to the square footage. A twenty-four, a twenty-four square foot versus a.
Would you like us to keep it twenty-four by twenty-four?
Whatever we keep, and I wanna stay at it. I'm tired of the back and forth, I guess is the hardest part, right?
Yeah, just need, you just need consistency.
Yeah, cause then I take it back and forth from the contractors, now they're mad. These guys are mad, so we've changed it back, now the contractor's mad, so we're like.
Yeah.
It just makes me look mad, cause I stick to my guns and say, this is what we're doing, then they come in here and it gets changed, and now we're going up the.
So if you're gonna change it to twenty-four by twenty-four, then don't allow.
We haven't changed it, that's just.
Right, but don't allow them to get back on the agenda to change it again.
Yeah, just shut it down, I guess, and what we need.
And the mayor, you set the agenda, so just because somebody asks to be put on the agenda, doesn't even have to put them on the agenda.
Well, that's, I, I realize that, and half these people have said no, but they still get on the agenda, so.
They want, you, you set the agenda. Yeah. Okay, well.
I'd say we say twenty-four. I made a motion that we.
Well, you don't need to make a motion, it's just, it is.
It is.
It just stays.
So we're just making.
Well, unless, now, I read in the minutes that at the last meeting, you moved and you voted. That if it was a three-car garage, then you would change it and consider it by square footage, is that correct?
That's how come those got approved.
Which is why these got approved, right? So you would need a motion to change that and undo the motion you did at the last meeting, if, if that's what you want to do.
I'm bringing a motion, that we can change it to twenty-four by twenty-four. The two-car garage and the three-car garage, and then it'd be made with a change for me. Do you have a second?
Go to the second. That motion fails, you have another motion?
No, my personal opinion is I think it needs to be, if it's going to be two-car garage, twenty-four by twenty-four, but if there's a third car garage, it's a license. Because you're going to have that front edge, you're going to have that driveway coming off of that third car garage, so you're going to have off-street parking, which is what we're trying to accomplish, you know?
Unless they do a wraparound third, right? It's not three wide, it's two wide, and just bring it out, push to the front, you know? It is additional square footage, storage space.
Why does the three-car garage even matter? Like, why is that even part of the discussion?
I don't think it does. Personally, I don't think it does.
That's what I'm saying, that's just a bonus for whatever they do.
Yeah, that's actually, they want to, they add up more space for a lawnmower or their boat or a camp trailer, whatever they want to stuff in there, yeah.
Well, because I, I have seen a lot of homes that have the three-car garages that, that wouldn't fit in this twenty-four by twenty-four, but I think the garage is big enough.
Well, there you go.
Why not just have a pad twenty-four by twenty-four concrete up in front, doesn't matter how big the garage is. Park the car in front of it. No, we, we want twenty-four by thirty-four. Well, everybody's got five cars now, so if they've got being here, so.
I think we just keep it the way it is then.
Like, like what we did last meeting or what?
We did last meeting.
What we did last meeting, I guess we need to get that down in some verbiage, so I don't, I mean, because that, we really didn't discuss what the, the car is, I guess, if we're going that route. I mean, right, or?
Yeah, I don't know.
We're just li- we're just leaving a loophole for these developers, the contractors to find, and they will get.
And, and it's just something that is a headache for Jordan and something they're going to fight with him about.
Yep.
So we need it clear, whatever it is, we just, we just need it clear.
Whatever it is, yeah, I've got to have, I've got to be able to show them proof, because every one of them that wanted to see that ordinance. Why they have to do twenty-four by twenty-four. So whatever we, whatever you guys decide needs, I guess, to be proved that I have, I have something to go back to.
Yep, it just needs to be clear.
Okay, what if we say? That the garage depth has to be twenty-four feet.
With no minimum width.
With no one of minimum width.
So they can have a one-car garage.
Have a one-car, two-car, well, if.
But we.
And if that, two-car garage.
No.
I don't think we can do that.
That'll be your fight.
We'd have, well, we have to change another ordinance, wouldn't we?
Yep, and, and one of the biggest things is the depth that people are upset about, so that, it.
It's the depth.
It's the depth, I mean, I mean, they're upset about both, but when it comes down to it, not many of them, most of them are twenty-two feet deep, twenty-two feet deep. And this is, if they're building spec homes, they want it as small as possible, if somebody's having a house built for themselves, they're always bigger than.
Well, these, there, these people building spec homes aren't having any trouble getting people to buy them.
That's also wrong.
Well, no, because most people don't even look at the garage, most people don't look. Here's how crazy it is, they don't even look at how high the kitchen or the, not kitchen, but the bathroom counters are. So some of them are putting kitchen-high counters in the bathrooms and nobody's even noticing it unless they've got kids.
So why are we here to govern that?
We're not.
Yeah, I was going to say that's a good.
The only thing we're there to govern is the off-street parking and make sure they have someplace to park besides on the street.
So if it was a smaller garage, you said the SUV would fit in there, just barely bumper to bumper?
Depending on what they have inside the garage for stairs or utility closet.
But it would fit?
If it's twenty-four feet deep.
If it's twenty-four foot deep.
Because a, 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 a standard SUV is eighteen feet long and we're talking twenty-two, eight on the inside. And then you build three or four feet out, you're, you're pretty much.
But that's just, the utility's just usually in front of one vehicle.
Yeah, most of them are about four feet deep and eight feet long, sometimes it's in one, sometimes it's in the center, so both vehicles would only have up to that utility closet. Your stairs can come out anywhere depending on where they bring that door out of the house, some are on the edge, some are in the middle, but we don't govern that, I don't care where the door is out there, you've got to have one. And I don't care where the utility closet goes. And not all homes have that utility closet, but there are a handful that are being built right now that have them utilized outside for. The water softener, they can back right up, put salt in about how to back to the basement, the, the water heater goes out, it's in the garage, they don't make a mess in the house, they can pull it right out and knock the back one down the stairs. So it is something people are doing, um, more and more, so. So the other reason why we actually brought up this ordinance to begin with, it wasn't, there, it wasn't an issue that any of the other homes had told us this new subdivision came in, right? I mean, that's really why we changed it. There, there, there's a few other homes in town that were being built that were pretty small, like twenty by twenty. I'm not saying that.
I know, if they didn't trigger.
They didn't trigger it, no.
I just have a hard time because of one subdivision that we have heard we're changing.
But we've approved that and if we don't keep the standard and they come in and build these tiny little garages.
Oh.
And there's no off-street parking because of that.
Have you driven up, have you driven up through the subdivision around the school that's in the impact zone, that's in the county?
Yeah.
I remember a lot of cars that are on the street.
I haven't seen how many cars are on the street.
Number of cars that are on the street, cars in the driveway, and there's usually one part of the driveway and a garage. Because the garages are too small.
I don't know if they're too small, if they're just not using them.
If they're just not in car, then maybe they're just not using other parts of the cars.
What'd you do when you plowed up there this year, Justin?
We, we plowed around them, right? I mean, it's just like when we stood up out there two weeks ago, we couldn't get to the suburban gutter, there's all cars lined up in the road.
So they're parking in the road already?
Yeah, so I mean, it's, we're going to get complaints no matter what, right? They call and complain, why you didn't sweep in front of my house, when you got two cars sitting on the street, they can't bring your cars, we can only sweep so close.
Now, in defense of all of this, we have increased the size of our minimum lot size to eighty feet from now on. So we have eliminated that problem because the number of lots up there are seventy feet wide. A lot of my, where, up there around the school, the lot line is seventy feet wide, we're now going eighty feet. On our, on our, our street, on our lot width, so we're, we're, we have a lot more space now on streets, because we park.
Okay, let's make a decision, um, but let's move forward here. We beat this dead horse to death.
I just don't know, I think me and Adam are in agreeance, if it's a double car garage, twenty-four is twenty-four is good, but we have to do something. That, do you agree? I think me and Adam are agreed to that, if there's a third car garage, I don't know how it would read in the ordinance, I don't know. But it's, it would benefit, but like, even speaking of for a car.
So what is that? That's, that's, we need, we need to, so if two of you are in agreement, then you can make a decision here tonight, so.
I just don't know how that reads, do you know what I'm saying?
Yep, I don't need it. Because if you go by square footage.
And I'm not a developer, because I'm not, I don't know, like you said, that third garage go, that goes back, I can't envision that, I don't know, I don't understand what you're saying, but.
Well, whatever loophole you leave, they're going to find them, so I can say that.
Can you say it has to have a minimum square footage and a certain depth? It, it could be X square footage, but it must be twenty-four feet deep.
Well, that's, that's what we're saying by the twenty-four by twenty-four, I think. And if they want to go wider, they can, just, just need clarity, I'm not advocating for one thing over another, just clarity.
Don't matter to me. You guys just need, like I say, we, like, we just need clarity, just need to stand behind.
That's hard for me to do, that's like asking me, like, how do you perform the surgery? And I'm like, I'm a surgeon, I don't know what the words look like, Jake.
Okay, if you put a, if you put a three-car garage on a house, you got twenty-four feet and then you put a third car garage on, it's going to either sit forward a few feet. Or it's going to sit back a few feet, just for looks, for architecture, and then it normally runs down the side of the house further, so it's deeper than the other garages are, the normal.
Right.
Unless they're like this, unless they're at an angle and you've got garage door entrance here and outdoor entrance to the side.
And, yeah, that's true.
So like.
We are seeing them.
Yeah, I mean, you see the front of the house, you see two garages, so you can either pull straight into the garage or they pull in and then they turn and go into the side door. Seen that too.
If that's the case, then ones are going to be small, that.
They're going to be narrow.
Car could be very, 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 very small.
Yep.
That's where they park their minicar.
Or fifty yards, right?
Yeah. Okay, so, I don't have my phone, I don't even know what happened to my phone. Okay, what, what is fourteen by thirty, put that in square footage? Four hundred and twenty. So if we said that the third car garage had to be, they, they could do square footage of five hundred and seventy square feet. Plus they had, if they did it for a single car or a two-car, if they did a third car, they could have five hundred and seventy plus another four hundred square feet.
I don't understand.
That ain't going to fit either. I mean, I got, today I, I had done three preventions, the garages between all three, between the double car and the extra third, I was seven fifty to eight hundred square feet between all of them, so. So that means they're, they're pretty small garage, they're, they're very, very small. Some of their third cars. And some of their two cars are only twen- twenty, most of them are only twenty feet on the front, twenty-two feet deep. And then they've got their little, they've got their smaller, you know, then they got their smaller third car garage off of the side, which isn't even over the five hundred and seventy-six square feet. But they're still not that big.
If, if, if I'm going to suggest something, if the concern is to try to keep the garage big enough to fit vehicles in and keep them off the street and everything. Then you say you need at least, the garage area has to have at least some portion that's twenty-four by twenty-four. And then if they add on width or depth or whatever, if they want to do more for a third, whatever, that's, that's extra, that's bonus, that's on them, but you have a minimum of twenty-four by twenty-four.
So do it by surface instead of dimension?
No, do it by dimension instead of surface. Surface, you can make all kinds of screwy shaped spaces and still get your square footage, your total surface area.
Oh, so it'd have to be like a box of at least twenty-four by twenty-four?
Yep, 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 as long as you can fit that box somewhere in the garage area, whether it's two-car, three-car, four-car, whatever, as long as they can fit the twenty-four by twenty-four, then.
Even if it's a third car.
And that's how I was reviewing them, because some of them.
But that's what we changed at the last meeting.
Like you say, they were fit, they were fit because of that, but over here, mine would be twenty-two feet deep. They're, they're the L and, you know, the twenty-four, and I, that's what I was telling people, is if a twenty-four by twenty-four box would fit in there. And I was going off the outside of foundation, because that's what we measure the square footage off of, the building permit.
Yeah.
Which is helping them even more than they probably should.
Yeah, because then you're giving them an.
We're already losing sixteen, yeah, we're already losing sixteen inches in both directions.
Yeah.
So if we, if, if the key is if we don't want to do that, then I say you go back to just saying, don't think garage be better, maybe.
Yeah, then I don't know that you need to regulate it at all.
Yeah.
We're not regulating it at all.
Except for they have to be off the road when there's snow.
Yeah, there's still, there's still that requirement.
Park on the grass, park somewhere.
But if we don't create an ordinance that creates a minimum space for them to get off the road, then we're shooting ourselves in the foot.
Yeah, because the developer is going to go in and do whatever and then they're going to pass it on to the end.
And then the homeowner is going to be like, oh crap, I don't, I can't park my car in here, I can't fit it in my driveway, so I have to park on the road, but if I park on the road, I'm going to get sighted. What, what can I do, mayor? That's the.
And, and they can't park on the grass either.
Most restricted covenant, say they can't, huh?
Can't what?
Can't park on the grass.
Park on the lawn.
Oh, yeah.
All agrees with twenty-four by twenty-four.
But we don't enforce that.
I know, well, that's not, yeah, we don't enforce it, CCRs.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and make it twenty-four by twenty-four foot garage dimension, but nothing in regards to third garage. Third garage is additional, whatever.
I'll second.
Okay, now let me make sure I got that right. So Jeff, you're moving that it needs to be a twenty-four by twenty-four two-car garage?
Well, one car, two car, three car, whatever they want to try to cram in here, but.
Minimum.
Twenty-four by twenty-four.
Yeah, garage.
Garage.
Okay.
Dimension.
Dimensional.
Yeah, dimensional, third car garage, it's irrelevant.
Box, minimum, minimum dimensions.
Okay, and third car what?
Is irrelevant, we don't care.
Okay, well, that's what you just moved before and it was died for a lack of second.
Or you just got seconded.
Okay.
All right, so it's been moved in seconded, all in favor, two in favor, all against, one against?
Jordan, I'm, I apologize, I'm not a professional, I'm just trying to learn and educate myself as everyone else. So, sorry if I'm making your life a little.
No, we'll just move on, let's just stick to this decision and when all, everybody's phone rings over and over, let's move on.
Don't put it back on the agenda.
It is not going back on the agenda.
So it doesn't matter, so we do need to amend the ordinance then, so it doesn't say two-car garage minimum. It just has to be a minimum garage space of twenty-four by twenty-four, right? So it still has to be amended.
Yep. Okay.
So going forward, is Jordan, is this, or does she have to wait till we do the ordinance, amend the ordinance?
The ordinance already says that more or less, but two-car.
Yeah, that's it, the, the only question is, is what you did at the last meeting, this effectively changes that?
Essentially, the ordinance, it, it, you can just go off what the ordinance says.
Yeah, but at the last meeting, you voted to.
Read it as square footage.
To read a square footage for three-car garages, which wasn't really defined, but that's, you know, that's how it was handled, so. Just to, I guess to play it safe, I'd say that until the ordinance is published. It's not effect, not in effect, you, in other words, still follow what they did at the last meeting? That, that would be my advice, is that you still follow what they did at the last meeting until this new ordinance is published, you know, a, after the first meeting.
As long as there's a third car garage, they can, this square footage just has to be over the five seventy-six.
Yes.
Until the fourteenth.
Until, right, until the, the next meeting. So that, that, I mean, that's the way I'd interpret what you did in the last meeting in conjunction with what you did in this meeting in conjunction with what the ordinance already says. Okay?
Clear.
No matter what we do, six months from now, we're going to wish we did it differently. So.
All right, I guess. Uh, okay, Reader Digest, Virgin, North England County Park. Adam.
Are we there?
Believe it or not, we are.
Um, so ideas, um, came to me, back to you here, because they're looking to see something down there. And they, uh, would be willing, if I don't know if this is possible or not, but they'd be willing to sign at least agreement with us to take care of all of the maintenance south of the tree line. That's what we're moving.
And do this?
Ideas, they're the one that have the historical park, I think, they're running on. So their board voted that if that was the case, they would, if we were to take over south of the tree line there, North England County Park, they would sign at least to take care of all of the maintenance.
So maintenance, like upkeep and everything?
Yeah. So I guess I just wanted to know.
I also thinks about that.
Did they plan on building any more buildings or anything?
They aren't right now, but I'm aware of it.
So then if they're maintaining it, they can use it for whatever they want to, or what, what is that, what's their plan, I mean?
Okay, I think, well, I think it was spurred because the county is going to, they're going, the county's going to try and shut their water off this summer.
No, that doesn't.
No, so they're going to, they're going to try and shut their water off and then, but if we go. No, so they're gonna, they're gonna try and shut their water off, and then, but if we go with the agreement that we had talked about with the county, the county agreed to allow us to use the water for two years till we got no water left. So that's what's, I think that's what spurred the new thing. But. What are you laughing at?
It's just laughing, it's just, it's just, great, I. I wonder why I can't pay for this job.
These are the nights you wonder, huh?
And it was freezing cold, and I was walking around miserable, and I'm thinking, why?
I just didn't, do you guys want me to pursue that, I guess, and see what they want, or should we just still keep it?
Yeah, see what, see what they're doing.
We should pursue it.
Yeah.
I think we should, yeah.
Will you, now, will they define maintenance? 'Cause I know when we talked before.
Yeah, that's, well, obviously, that's what we need to, that's what we need to find out, right, I mean, and I would probably have a meeting probably with them and with Justin and myself, and we can just discover, what is their maintenance, right, what is?
How in the road to get back their water sprinkler lines, changing light bulbs?
Yeah, all that stuff, right. Because that's our concern, right, is using, you know, city dollars to pay for something that's out in the county, and that's what we don't want to hear.
And Justin and Chris Buzina.
Right. So essentially, by, that's why they, I mean, there's no secret, it's trying to get the county out of it, because counties, if they're gonna turn their water off, then they're parked guy, essentially.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, maybe they'll, see what they.
You good with that, Justin, if I said something off of the, you know? Okay.
All right, all right, old council business.
Oh, the urban renewal ordinance, you skipped over that, but we, I don't have a template yet to get one drafted.
Sweet, okay.
Okay.
She told me that we didn't already.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, she was waiting for him to send it. Sorry, I shouldn't have told you that.
PJ's doing his job though.
Yeah, good job, PJ. Um, okay. Uh, old council business, consider bids or street improvements. Sandy, you caught up with us?
Yep, I am.
Okay, Justin.
I think everybody should have a copy in their binder of the, of the prices. Let's start out with the street overlays.
I'll, um.
Should be behind you memo, Mayor.
All right. So these are, these are the roads I went and looked at, and feel like we probably could, um, put some attention to them this year. Aspen Street, you know, we worked on that last year, we worked on it last couple of years since then, the tree farm, but Aspen needs to be finished from across from the Spruce area to South Park. It'll also include the cul-de-sac, will also include, there's about three drains, storm drains that need to be jackhammered out and put back in place and reformed and surrounded and do all of that work. Uh, storm drains will be done by the city, and then, um, we went ahead and dropped the three bids, you can see the three bids, asphalt maintenance. I would, I do need to say this year, these bids came in very competitive, like these, all three of these companies, they were very close on, on these, just until.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, um, yeah, so anyways, I, you want me to name off the companies and numbers, or can you guys see that, what do you want me to do?
Uh, I can see them, you get them on me, okay.
Yeah, okay. So on Aspen, you know, I, I think, uh, the law is we take the lowest bid, uh, H and K did come in on the lowest bid on Aspen. Um, East Elm, East Elm from Lincoln to Milton, um, same idea, right? E- East Elm, there, we do have a handful of streets that need a lot of work, and so it's hard to pick, right, but I picked East Elm to work up on that area. Um, same idea, I mean, if you look at that one, Knife River and H and K were within a hundred and eighty bucks of each other, so I mean, that was very, that was very, very close. So H and K did get the lowest bid on that, uh, H and K got the lowest bid on all of them, but like I say, it was very competitive. So my idea on streets this year was to finish Aspen out, replace the gutters, and then take East Elm from Lincoln, clear down to Emerson. Um, the double gutter on Holmes and East Elm is in very poor shape, so that will be replaced. We'll have it, my guys will go in, we're going to get that replaced before they do the street overlay project, so.
You can easily lose the front of your car, you know?
You can, and it's, I was hoping to do it last year, and, and we're still struggling trying to find the help, right, I mean, the white dudes are right now, we can't. I reached out to so many concrete guys, and we can't, we're having a hard time getting help, so, it's gonna be a struggle again, but I'm hoping we can work through and get it done. So, um, I do want you guys to know, I'm gonna bring in another part of this before we make a decision here, just so you're aware, but on our first street sewer line project, that last block from Milton to Lincoln, that road's only twenty-four feet wide, um, when they went in there to do that sewer line, you know, they removed approximately ten, twelve feet of asphalt, that road fell apart, so that's not gonna be a patch job on that road, like the rest of the blocks are, that's gonna be a total new road. That'll be a, a whole, they will clean the asphalt right off and put down twenty more feet, twenty-four more feet of new asphalt, so.
So that one, wha- what about the gas line, though, we don't have any idea what they're gonna.
So, we, I talked to the gas company today, um, they are, I think there's six pipe loops up there that they do have to replace. They can't give me a timeframe, I don't know if it's gonna be tomorrow, or if it's gonna be this fall, we, we can't, they can't.
So we might have a gravel road all winter.
No, so I, I think what we need to do, so when I talked to them, what they would like to do is they're gonna go pothole right over the top of the gas main, approximately a three foot by four foot hole. So they don't need to do a bunch of trenching and dig it up, so they're good, they'll have six holes like that. Um, I would say we go ahead and get the rope back in, let them come in sometime this summer and pothole and do their work, we'll patch them in. And then part of our sewer line project does require a, a chip seal on that old road. So we won't do a chip seal yet until the, the gas company's done with their project, and we'll go over and chip the whole road, which will reseal those patches.
Where's the gas line, what, where's the gas line?
There's a high pressure gas line going up on that last, well, there's all the way through there, that last block where there's a high pressure, they call them, I think, a farm, a farm loop, or something she's calling them. And there's a gap, so when it, when it goes into the property's, uh, the homeowner's property, it comes up like two feet, over two feet, and down two feet. What they wanna do is go in and, and fill it right at the main, take that gas loop out of the ground and, and connect it into the ground, so it's not coming up and out. It just, we'll connect it straight in and turn that gas back on.
But they wouldn't do it before.
They wouldn't do it before H and K's project, we've been trying to work with them, and we still won't, I don't know if they're gonna come in, like I say, tomorrow or in November, I, I don't know. So, but part, and so a rough estimate of that road, to do that completely overlay, we're looking at about forty, I'm gonna tell you forty-five thousand dollars. So what I did this year, um, I've got about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to work with between the, between what I just presented here and our crack seal and seal coat, that puts us roughly around three hundred and eighty thousand. So I usually like to buffer about thirty to forty thousand, because, you know, our streets sometimes come out of that, our road paint for highlights, stuff like that, so. If we're forty or forty-five thousand, now, um, on the sewer line project, there, there are still monies available for the patching that would've been done on that road. So let's say I got forty-five thousand, we may have to come up with about twenty to twenty-five, there should still be about, close to half monies available to put back in on that new, on that new road, if that makes sense. 'Cause that was bit in the project as patch material, but it's the same stuff, right? So most likely, we'll have to come up with another, I'm gonna say twenty-five thousand dollars. So, and the way I've got it budgeted, that will work in our budget, and we're gonna be okay, but that, that'll completely use that budget up, which usually I like to hang on to twenty thousand just for a buffer, but we'll probably be right there, and we'll be using it, yeah.
All right.
So I just wanted you guys to be aware of that before we made a decision on, on them, on these roads, just so you know, we will have some more money coming out of that for that last block.
All right, somebody make a motion.
Make a motion, we go ahead and approve the street overlays for twenty twenty-two, as, as constituted.
Good move, the seconded, go ahead and approve the, uh, overlay, uh, street overlays for twenty twenty-two, all in favor? Three in favor.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you award you the bids to H and K as well?
Page and page, yeah.
And then on the second page, the cracks and seal coats, um, I kinda broke it down, we're a dollar ninety per square yard, last year we was a dollar forty-four. And, uh, the, the three thousand per ton, last year was twenty, twenty-four hundred per ton, so things have gone up quite a bit.
How, we were twenty, what last year?
Twenty-four hundred a ton.
Jeez.
So we've run up six hundred per ton on that, and, you know, fifty cents, like a deal on the other. So, um, what I'm, I guess, uh, I'd like to work on the nature trail, I think we discussed this last year, and it does need some attention. We go through and crack, uh, seal and seal coat the trail from Center Street to Firth, and then also from the fire station out to probably the Firth, I think the Second Firth, out, more or less a county line is where we go. And then, um, I'd like to go ahead and work on the city hall's parking lot here before we lose it, I'd like to get it cracked sealed and seal coated. And also our parking lot, and the transfer station. So, and then whatever we have left, I don't think we use all of our crack seal money. And so whatever we have left, we'll go fix, uh, you know, a couple of blocks as one of our worst areas and go ahead and crack seals up road, I don't know what that'll be. Crack seal's hard, right, because the more cracks you have, the more material you're using, so we kind of just watch it, we put a number together, and once we hit that number, we come to get cracked sealed.
Okay, I need a motion.
Make a motion, we go ahead and approve the crack seal seal coat for the, uh.
I'll say it.
Good move, the seconded, go ahead and approve. Crack seal for twenty twenty-two.
I don't think you're saying it, but.
All in favor?
Jeff, they're fast-tracking your motion.
I guess, well, I didn't say, uh, I couldn't put this on, we're gonna have asphalt maintenance do the work, it's under the fifty thousand dollars, we've built up in a few different jobs, and so I need to get the bids on that. None of them under fifty, I don't have to do the three of us, you guys have been helping us the last three or four years, they do a good job, we're just gonna use them.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Council reports, PJ. Sandy.
The only thing I have is to get, give Maureen a little bit of kudos, a gentleman came in and wrote a note, 'cause Maureen wasn't there, to tell her that, um, he passed it along, it says, I have been doing, I have been dealing with Maureen for a couple of years now, she has always been amazing, thank you, gratitude. So anyways, just wanted to make sure you guys knew that, there's a lot of comeuppance come in, not reacting, we get them in writing, but just wanted to let you know.
Yeah. Good. Michael.
Talker's going good, we have pool swimming lessons starting tomorrow, Pam's gonna be up there, um, baseball practices are going, they're going good, on Arbor Day, May twenty-first, uh, Jess and I drove around, and we're gonna, I already ordered the three trees, and we're gonna do it at the City Park, I did let Gary Bates know. And so it'll be City Park at three P M. on May twenty-first, and then we'll have two trees there for sure, and then probably one over at Breton Park. And that's it.
Okay. Jordan, you good in?
Yeah, just wanna let you guys know, the new online committing process is up and running, um, as you can see, the, the building permits are a little different. Uh, we've done probably eight to ten permits through that process, and I've got, I'm gonna say another ten to fifteen in the application process right now. Um, I've got good positive feedback from most of people, there's been a few things we're working through with the company, and they've been awesome to work with, and helped change things on the fly as we go, so. So I appreciate you guys letting us switch over to that classes.
Justin.
I've got a few things, I'll try to be quick, uh, cleanup is done, usually it's a four to five week project, and this week, this year, we was like a week and a half. I don't know if the cold weather and rain, people didn't get stuff out, but it was, uh, it worked out good on our end, so, well, that was, that was nice. I appreciate you letting me hire Jayden Well, um, street parking signs, we're gonna put up the no street parking signs on Oakland Fort and Topaz next Monday on May sixteenth. So, uh, the street signs are made, they're ready to go, I've been working with Rod on this, and Sandy, and even when she sent letters after everybody, so we run, know what's going on. I'll let Rod know Monday morning, once they're up, and that way we can start patrol on that, and make sure we keep them cars out of the way, then garbage cans, so, so, just a heads up on that. Um. On the sixty, that's right, yeah, so people are just with you. Uh, Phase, uh, Phase Two of Sunset, Brett's gonna hopefully be starting that within the next week to two weeks, was kind of working out with that. Uh, we're gonna have weekly meetings with H L E over there every two or three days, and just kind of try to keep tabs on that project. Um, sewer line on First Street is going good, they've got all the, all the manholes have been placed, they're cleared at the end of the canal, they're backfilling, and they're working their, they've got like four sewer lines dug up and one manhole to hold it. So that, that was, uh, sewer line, the last manhole come in within one tenth of where it should've been, so we're talking an inch, inch and eight. Like it was awesome, like it hit right where it should've been, they did a good job, so. So, yeah, they're, uh, I don't really have a date when they're gonna be out of there, but like I say, as quick as I, uh, as quick as they get things finished up, they'll start doing some cleanup, they got some yards to fix, they got some, see, gotta grout manholes, grout some pipe, do some, do some testing and stuff, but it is installed and everything's in place right now, so.
Good.
That's awesome, they did a good job, that last block was tight, it was a struggle, but they got through it, so, I give a few oaths for that. Uh, the street sweeper, the, the old street sweeper we had, we surplus like three years ago, we finally got it sold a couple of weeks ago, so. Guy out in California purchased it, uh, twenty-five hundred, twenty-five fifty's what we got, so, it, anyways, they got picked up about two weeks ago, type of deal, so. Um, okay, the, the curb and gutter on Highway ninety-one, we kind of talked, well, we did talk about this last year, but sort of by the high, you know, the high nail parking right there. It's, so I, I did reach out to the state today, they're gonna meet me over there on Thursday and look at it, the state might be willing to help us with that. The curb and gutter on three or four spots is completely gone, and we've got sidewalk that's sticking up like this, probably eight or ten inches, it's a tripping hazard, somebody's gonna fall and get hurt on that, so. Last year, we didn't wanna do anything with it, 'cause it's not necessarily ours, it's either the state or the railroads. We're to the point, we've probably, something's gotta be done with it, because it is gonna be a, a lawsuit for somebody.
So you're talking about the main street on Els, the site?
Yeah, on Highway ninety-one on the east side, like where you, where the tree committee would like to do their upgrades and stuff, you know?
So it's not A D A compliant, so we need a larger sidewalk too.
Yeah, it's a, it's a narrow sidewalk, so for now, though, I would just like to get it, so it's not a safety hazard, right, at least get the curb and gutter and sidewalk, so you can walk on it without a bike, like you do.
Yeah, but if we're gonna do a sidewalk, won't you put an A D A compliant one in?
Well, we're, we're only, we're talking like two pieces, right, we're talking ten feet here, five, we're not talking like three hundred feet sidewalk, no. No, we're just talking about the pieces that have lifted up over the winter and are shifting, that's a.
But don't we have quite a bit of money in that budget that we've held over to help reduce some of that for the tree? Oh, I thought you were saving that for your lampposts and stuff. Well, for all that, and that that's gonna help with the sidewalk, if we have to do some of that. I wanna say you have maybe twenty-four thousand, I think.
Yeah, so, but I think for now, the idea is just to get it fixed, so it's not a safety hazard, and then when the tree committee's ready for a project, we'll look at it at that point to see what, what, you know, I know if Dale drew something up, right, something like that, we'll have to figure that out, so. But anyways, I'll let you know, I guess, how that goes, it may come back on us, and if it's railroad property, they're not gonna do anything with it, it's gonna fall back on us.
Yeah.
But we do need to do something with it.
Stay out of it, we need to do something with it.
But, um, anyways, I think other than that, Kim, I'll try to get with you this next week, I would like to get movies figured out and get movies ordered for this, for this year.
Okay, Blake had them, did they not pick out any, Blake had the list?
Okay, and I missed last meeting due to some other things, so I don't, I, I don't know if they got discussed last meeting or not, but I haven't, I haven't heard from anybody, so I'll try to follow up with.
Okay, we'll just get together and do it.
Okay, um.
I think Blake must've pulled that off, and if you go into Swank Productions, you can see the list that they have there. 'Cause I think what you provided didn't have all the movies, right, Justin?
No, I, I never did provide a list, I just, I just asked everybody to get on the website and look at it and pick out, pick out some movies.
Wait, can you send me the website link, and then I'll just tell you the ones?
Okay, it's just swankproductions.com.
How do you still have?
S W A N K. I'll send one in. Okay, so anyways, uh, other than that, things, things are going good, guy would've been doing some street cleaning, we got cleanup done, we started patching some holes today with some hot mix. Uh, probably get sprinklers turned on in the next couple of weeks, and we'll be back out on the trail to finish up that project from last fall, so we're just trying to keep, keep things going, so.
All right.
Thanks, appreciate it. Oh, I would also like to say, it's been a pleasure working with Chief Muller, we are gonna miss him, he's, you know, he does fill in a big gap here, but, uh, also like. Uh, also like to congratulate Chad first, I see, I think he's gonna be a great man for the position and look forward to working with him in the future, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rod, you got any?
I do. Monday, I need the out-of-town information, you get the Chad, you get on Monday, so we can get you to work and tell it, yeah. It was brought to my attention, now that we canceled, uh, the end of the meeting, this is my last coun- council meeting that I will have the, the honor to sit through in that chair. Uh, I, I know, I've been through a lot of council meetings, this one was really good for the new, new chief. So he can see how speedy and entertaining city government really is, so, uh, up to the my fire. And I, I, I agree, I, I think, uh, my, my chair both in here and in there is going to be filled ver- very well, Chad will do a very wonderful job. Um, I just wanna say, I wanna thank everybody for, I know I still got a couple of weeks, but for the, the friendship and the camaraderie and, uh, everything that we've all been through with each other throughout the, the years. Uh, we may not have always seen eye to eye, but we always had each other's backs and we always had the community first. And that's, after all, that's our job and purpose. So, thank you for the friendship and everything, and, uh, next time, that chair right there is yours.
Okay.
Thank you all, so, thanks, all, and chief.
Yeah, I'd like to say to Chief Muller that it'll, we're gonna miss him. Said that before, and, and look forward to a great meeting there. And, uh, I mean, Greg, Chad. Yeah, I can go like, I can.
It's the quarter to eleven, Jeff.
I know. I'm just gonna go, Greg, Chad. Um, look forward to being there, um, the seventeenth is election weekend tonight. We encourage everybody to get out and vote for this sewer district. This is a huge thing, um, it's kind of a quiet thing, I'm hoping that it's passed. Um, you know, but get out and get that, and get your neighbors to go out and sign up and, and, uh, make sure they vote for it. So we can have that passed. Something that's very important, it's kind of a quiet deal, but it's a big thing, that's all I have.
Alright, Kim?
Do you know, as I sit here, and this was a long meeting, um, partly myself, I have to say that everyone here is more like a family than anything else. And I have to say, you know, to what chief says, it's like, we might not always agree on things, we do have each other's back. And so with your retirement, chief, it's almost like you're still, you're a part of the family. Come back, look, come back, see? So it's just your family.
And, and, and I promise I will, without all the complaint.
You're moving down the line.
Oh, boy.
So, I appreciate people's patience with me, 'cause I know, being the only woman on the board, sometimes my emotions and thought process might take a little longer, or I change, women change their minds a lot. So, Sandy, you're patient with me, thank you, I appreciate you. And Chad, I'm excited, you, you're gonna learn a lot about a, a city government that you had no idea. So, anyway, Michael, you're awesome, you do a great job with all those kids and anyway, I'd love to be part of the family, that's a good thing.
It really is.
Adam?
Yeah. Hi, too, I'm gonna miss Chief Muller, um, going in and sitting at the desk, talking to him about everything that's going on, I think that things, there's been a lot of changes this week, this year. And I think they've been good, changes, uh, so I'm gonna miss that. And looking forward to working with Chad, though, um, that'll be great too, and I can't say any more than.